President.
All right, you can get started, Mr. Garcia.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Greetings all, Trenton City Council Meeting, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's now called the order, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your statement is correct.
Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two-three-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known, it was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. From the looks of it, she is present, I will come back to her. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Harrison is excused from this meeting. Councilwoman Williams.
Present y presente.
Council President Gonzalez.
Presente.
Coming back to Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Can unmute.
I faintly heard her say she was here.
Present, yes.
Thank you. Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Eppololoji is present this evening. And City Attorney, Mr. West Bridges. Thank you. And, Madam President, if you like, I'll read the invocation. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory, amen. And, Madam President, at this time, I believe we have a recognition, if you'd like to announce that.
Yes, I believe Mr. Maguar was not able to attend, had something on, so we're gonna actually move that to a later date. And, so we can move right along to the presentation.
Understood, at this time, we have a lead presentation. Madam President, is there a time limit for this presentation?
Ten minutes, please.
Certainly, thank you.
Hello, how about that? Good evening, I want to thank Councilwoman Edwards for inviting me here to talk about lead. We met at a press conference where that ILS organized to elevate the issue of cut funds at the federal government. And Councilwoman Edwards spoke very beautifully on behalf of the city, and invited me here today to talk more about lead. And I know I've got ten minutes, and I also want to call out my friend and colleague Cheryl Snyder, who's here with me tonight, who I work with. So I'm gonna talk to you about important things to know about lead, and maybe there's gonna be surprises for you. So the problems of lead. So here's a New York Times quote of the day. If you, this is a picture of someone named Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha from Flint, Michigan. She's the pediatrician who identified the increase in lead levels among children in Flint back in two thousand and fourteen, and understood that it was because they changed the source of water. She said, "If you were gonna put something in a population to keep them down for generations to come, it would be lead." And here is a quote from Dr. Robert Sansom from Harvard, which is, "Lead toxicity is a pathway through which racial inequality literally gets into the body. It's the number-one environmental health threat for children, and also their adult impacts." And that may be the surprise today when I go through my PowerPoint. So, high blood pressure, muscle pain, kidney disease, miscarriages, stillbirth, and more. And, oops, oops. So, quick facts about, about lead in the body. It acts as calcium, and it accumulates in the bone over a lifetime. So, and during pregnancy, the body pulls out lead where calcium is supposed to be. So if you were burdened with lead as a child and haven't been anywhere near that lead environment, you could be poisoned all over again, causing troubles in pregnancy and for the fetus and newborn. Maybe some of you have heard of ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences. The top one shows, you know, the ones that the child development experts have talked about. And I will say that I've been schooled by some pediatricians who really helped me understand that lead poisoning makes all of those ACEs, those Adverse Childhood Experiences, worse. So this is some data back from two thousand and twelve. You may know that the state collects data for, on an annual basis, about what lead levels are. And I can say that, right now, what we asked is how many children are starting kindergarten with at least one high lead level, and that doesn't get reported. Back in two thousand and twelve, we could see that over fifty percent of children were starting kindergarten with a lead level of two-point-five and above. And let me just emphasize here, there's no safe level of lead. If you remember nothing else from this, there is no safe level. This is just research, which just shows even at low amounts, how it affects learning, grade test scores, more likely to fail at reading, grade level reading and math tests. And here's what, lead poisoning in school performance, we hear a lot about this, I want to put some meat on the bones for you. Compromised long-term memory. So a student learns their multiplication tables on Monday, they wake up Tuesday and they've got nothing. It's reduced auditory processing, makes it difficult to hear the difference between S as in Sam and F as in Frank. And that inability to control behavior, disruption in classrooms, lower test scores for individuals and entire school districts, and a disproportionate number of low-income males incarcerated, unemployed, and aimless. Here's the insidious thing about lead, it affects the male brain more so than the female brain. Here's some data for Flint, and you probably are aware of the terrible change in water and problems that happened in Flint, starting in two thousand and fourteen. So the suspension rates increased from two-point-five percent to almost fourteen percent. Forty percent proficient in reading before water change, reduced to ten. Seven times more likely to be suspended, those suspended, ten times more likely to end up in juvenile detention. So, and there's clearly some work that's been done by Princeton professors, interconnection with poverty, and relates to housing. So, and then there's the adult impacts of lead, much larger than previously understood. Pregnancy outcomes, cardiovascular disease, kidney disease, even dementia and intergenerational obesity. So the four leading causes of black maternal mortality in New Jersey are preeclampsia, cardiomyopathy, embolism, bleeding and hemorrhaging. And this is overlooked research, in terms of what the impact is of lead on these. Lead is correlated with all of these conditions. So you probably are aware of this, black mothers in New Jersey are over three-and-a-half times more likely to lose their babies in the first year, more likely to have complications of birth weight problems, and also birth miscarriages, and even infant mortality. So here's a team I've been working with on highlighting all this research about adults. And, you know, you could look at this, I'm not gonna take my time reading the names. So lead and preeclampsia. So it appears to be the strongest risk factor yet for preeclampsia reported. And it shows that we should routinely be testing lead concentrations in pregnant people. So this is a known factor, and yet we're currently not even testing women or pregnant persons for lead. We know it's associated with embolism or clot formation. We know it's involved in cardiomyopathy, which is, again, a killer here in New Jersey, and lead in cardiovascular disease. Oops, I don't know if I'm... All right, and it's involved in hypertension. And we know that these conditions are particularly high in the black population and folks in... Well, anyway, it's much greater cardiovascular mortality than we thought before. Lead accounts for more than four hundred thousand deaths annually in the U.S., a tenfold increase over the number of deaths currently ascribed to lead. So lead and internal bleeding, again, there's the proof there. And new moms are at risk of developing high blood pressure and complications six weeks after childbirth, even if they've had no problems. Because lead is also, continues to be released from the bones during lactation. And, anyway, the higher risk among moms over thirty-five, and black women. And New Jersey collects data about postpartum moms for twelve months, because they know there's problems after that. Lead and kidney disease. Blood levels at even low levels increase the risk of chronic kidney disease. And then there's lead impact pregnancy and infancy. There's a colleague, Eric Bend, who's doing a project up with New Jersey Department of Health, it's called the Bio-Monitoring Project. And he's showing that fourteen percent of Newark women, they're only testing up in Newark, had lead levels of greater than one microgram per deciliter. Thirteen percent of the babies were born with small heads, small stomachs, low birth weight, shorter stature. Remember, there's no safe lead level. And we're currently, the CDC only recommends public health intervention at three-point-five, and we're talking about symptoms and impacts as low as one microgram per deciliter. So what we've been doing so far, this committee and me, or I, we've been meeting with Nurture New Jersey, oops, seemed to disappear on that side. With Nurture New Jersey, MEA, DOH, Nurture New Jersey. We've engaged with the Preeclampsia Foundation. Robyn Doria, who I've been working with, is head of the Preeclampsia Foundation. And she was stunned to know, after all these years working in public health and maternal health, that lead could be remobilized during the bone during pregnancy. She didn't know it. We're working on a bill, two bills, four-eight-four-eight and three-six-one-six, typo there, to require universal testing of pregnant persons for lead during pregnancy. We started an education campaign with partners, both for healthcare providers and for the public. We've met with Bonnie Watson Coleman and Cory Booker, seeking to revise prenatal and postpartum protocols at the federal level. And we're also working with Brian Buckley there. And we started education campaigns, universal testing. We're working trying to get all community health workers and home visitors trained, passing legislation, and a few other items here.
Much, that was your time. Does any council members want to ask any questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. Madam President, I don't know if the council has any questions for the presentation, or if we're moving forward with the agenda.
You're moving forward, please.
Thank you. And at this time, we will have public comment for agenda items only. If I could have the clipboard for public comment for agenda items only. Or docket items. And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. We have one individual for, for a public comment for docket items only. Please note, you may reference any item on the docket, nothing else at this time. The council is not obligated to respond. Our individual is CJ, I'm sorry, Barbara... Got it, thank you. Barbara Lakey. Sure.
I was struggling.
Good afternoon, good evening, council members, Mr. Garcia, Jenna, who's with the baby, and Mr. Harrison, who's not here. I'm talking about twenty-five zero four seven. It's very new, it's to change the parking. From stop signs from fifty feet to twenty-five feet, except in school zones, still keep it fifty feet. I'm really glad this has been bought up. I've received numerous tickets in the past six months. Never got any for thirty-nine years. But now I have one. I'm actually going to trial for July seventeenth for parking in my own driveway. My driveway, it's not like a regular driveway, it's, you know, sidewalk, it's the street, a cutout, sidewalk, and a garage, where my wife parks, I'm not allowed to park in the garage. Anyway, I'm glad this is bought up. Hopefully, Mr. Santor and the powers that be, and you all, pass this, to make it twenty-five feet, because as it is right now, the way my house sits, and where my driveway is, to be legal, I have to park over seventy feet from the corner, so that's twenty-three feet the city's getting. I would like to be able to park in my driveway, municipalities. So I'm gonna actually add something to this twenty-five oh four seven, that if you can make it, and you can, in ordinance regulating parking of vehicles near stop signs, sorry. If you could add it, because I've seen it in other cities throughout the state, where residents can get parking permits for three vehicles to park in the driveway. Not, I'm not, you know, just parking, I showed you pictures the last time, I remember, just on the street. If that could be added, that would be great. Or maybe we should let this twenty-five feet go first, and then jump on that. And, you know, it's like a fifteen-dollar fee a year, or something like that, for three parking passes for the residents of the house. That would be great, but I really appreciate that you all have bought this up, and you're working on it, and hopefully it passes. And I got two and a half minutes, so I'm done, Doug.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
Madam President, moving on with the agenda at this time. If you want to ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports. Actually, my apologies, if you'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And Madam President, I did circulate April first minutes, though I do not know whether you've had time to review those, so I'll defer to the council.
Did anyone have a chance to look over the April first? No? So we're gonna leave April first out until the next meeting. Mr. Garcia, to give everyone ample time.
No worries.
Maybe have a motion to approve the minutes for March eighteenth, please, so moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
Maybe have a motion to approve communications petitions and reports, so moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-two-three, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property, commonly known as Lipton Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block three-four-zero-zero-five, Lot six, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve thirteen B five, to David W. Boston, for the sale price of two thousand five hundred dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time?
Directed listener is gonna come up.
Understood.
We did some additional research on this property, and it butts against a public avenue, public street. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Because it butts up against a public street, legally, we have to do a vacation on the street. We can't sell the street. And we have to also notify the rest of the people in the area that we're looking to vacate it. And then we would, after we vacated, if that's decided to be done, we would then do a sale. So I'm requesting this ordinance be withdrawn at this point.
So we're gonna pull it from admin?
So, and that'll be pulled by administration? Thank you.
Well, by HED.
Oh, I'm sorry, pulled by HED.
HED.
Got it.
Thank you.
Moving on to, for our next ordinance for second reading, public hearing. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-two-six, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as nine thirty-eight Greenwood Avenue, and identified on the city tax map, block two-seven-five-zero-two, Lot thirteen, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve thirteen C, to Bernada Encarnacion, for the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero twenty-six.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-two-nine, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as three fifty-one Walnut Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block two-seven-four-zero-one, Lot twelve, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve thirteen C, to Robert Barber Jr. for the sale price of three thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve, still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as fifteen Clag Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block two-two-five-oh-two, Lot forty-one, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C, to Senior Scott, for the sale price of three thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time?
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
I just wanted to point out that Clag has two G's in its title.
Understood, we will see to it or make sure that the resolution reflects seeing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero-three-zero, still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-three-two, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as four seventy-eight North Clinton Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block two-one-nine-oh-one, Lot fourteen, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C, to Cruz B. Gomez, for the sale price of three thousand five hundred dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero thirty-two.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
I'm sorry, is that a yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-three-four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as twenty-four Perrin Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block seventeen-oh-one, Lot seventeen, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C, to Tommy Igor, for the sale price of ten thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve twenty-five dash thirty-four.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-three-seven, an ordinance establishing a high-rise emergency assistance plan for a multi-unit residential building of forty units or more, and mandating certain emergency action. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero thirty-seven.
Still moved. Second.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. I know at the last minute, we discussed having a lower amount.
Yes.
Down to twenty to twenty-five, and then you and I subsequently had a conversation right after the meeting with the fire captain, and discussed having an amendment that in one year's time, hence, we would lower the amount to twenty-five units.
We did speak about that, but not as an official amendment. He was just saying he wanted to keep it as is right now.
So I wanted to ask about proposing an amendment tonight for three hundred sixty-five days, one year, hence, that we do lower this amount from forty to twenty-five, after the fire department gains more experience and actually making sure that this ordinance is carried out. And that we do cover more buildings in one year.
I'm open to, if anyone wants a motion to amend it, to keep it as, for one year, for forty units or more, and then after a year, go down to twenty-five. I don't think that was the conversation that, I don't think he wanted to make it official.
I would like to.
You want to make it official, gotcha.
I'd like to make a motion for that.
All right, so maybe have a motion to amend twenty-five dash zero thirty-seven to include language, which includes forty units or more for three hundred and sixty-five days, and then we will go to twenty-five units or more.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Madam President, so that was the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Edwards, thank you. And I'll take a roll call for that motion.
Council President?
Councilwoman Frisbee, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Just real quick, I'm sorry, hon, did we say something about posting it up or something? Did we cover that?
It's included, it's under communication, letter E, I think.
Letter E or F?
Yeah, E or F, something like that. It should be under the...
Did we say something about posting it up in the buildings or something?
It says throughout, it would be posted publicly and available upon request from the residents. I can't find it right now.
I was looking for it.
Letter F.
Section, what's that?
Section two, I'm sorry, section three.
Section three.
Letter F, activation activation. Do you see it? Okay. You got it? Okay.
Madam President?
Okay, moving on with the vote for, oh, I'm sorry.
No, Madam President?
Or can we move, Madam President, move on with the vote for the amendment?
Yes.
No, excuse me, Madam President? Can you hear me?
Madam President, it sounds like somebody's trying to say something, there's additional discussion, maybe one moment.
It's Councilwoman.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, Madam President. Yes, yes. I just, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
This is every time with this laptop.
She wants to switch to her phone, Mr. Garcia. I don't know.
Can I? Hey, Brandon?
Pick out some women, you're live.
Okay, thank you. Can they hear me?
A little better.
Okay. I want to log on with my phone after this question, but I just want to ask a question really quickly. Can I ask, Councilwoman Williams, just for more clarity, on the amendment from forty units to twenty-five units in the next year, what does that entail exactly?
Do you want to answer that? She wants to know why, more clarity on why you want to go from forty to twenty-five. Yeah, you have to mute Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, either the laptop or the phone.
To answer your question, Councilwoman, the reason I originally suggested to lower is because we do have a great number of mid-sized buildings for our residents in the city that are apartment. And I would love to have had to start off at twenty or twenty-five, but considering the concern, the fire department, fire captain, that they are doing something like this and going to be enforcing an ordinance for the first time in at least a very long time, they'd rather wait a year so they get a year under their belt with a larger number of apartment units and then migrate to a lower number that would cover more buildings in our city.
So thank you, Councilwoman. Would it make more sense maybe to amend it to say high-rise emergency assistance plan for multi-unit residential building of up to forty units or more?
So Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, we kept it at forty at the moment after speaking with the captain because he felt like they wanted to get a handle on making sure that they were being able to enforce it the correct way first before adding on to the list of buildings that they would have to do because the fire department is going to be responsible for mailing out the notices and kind of doing all of the paperwork to notify all of the building owners.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to be clear as to why we were starting at forty and then working our way down or why we wouldn't just say up to forty, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
Just before we vote, where exactly would that language be placed in the ordinance and how would it be worded?
So I'm thinking, where would we put it? Let's see, I work it out.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I suggest the first paragraph to say, whereas the city of Trenton recognizes the need for a comprehensive emergency preparedness and assistance plan for high-rise residential buildings containing forty units of more units, semicolon, and in one year, comma, this requirement will be for twenty-five units or more, period.
So in the, in the beginning, is that?
And then that clause would.
I want to put every instance of forty units.
Mr. Cologi, are we able to add that into the first?
Madam President, I'm going to give Mr. Cologi a copy in order for him to look at.
I have one to open up.
Briefly.
Councilwoman Williams, would you be okay if we just came back to this in a year and amended it at that time?
If that's easier, and that's what Mr. Cologi suggests, I'm fine with that. Just, please let's not forget.
Yeah, Madam President, as you're aware, an ordinance on adoption or a second reading, a hearing can be amended, but if the amendment is considered substantive, really substantive, it would then have to be carried for adoption at the next meeting. So the first thing we need to do is be very clear on exactly what we're amending this ordinance to say tonight. And based upon just the number of units going from forty to twenty-five, the city attorney and I both agree that would probably be a major substantive amendment. So, I mean, we could put that in there that it's going to go to twenty-five, but we couldn't actually adopt it until the next meeting. And any other very specific amendments that we're going to make tonight, whoever is making them, the clerk has to be able to take them down verbatim so he knows exactly what the council's intent is. So we know the forty to the twenty-five, but whatever the other amendments are.
That was the only amendment for right now. So I was suggesting if it's too much, can we just come back to this in a year and amend the actual ordinance after the year?
We can amend it to vote to amend it tonight, and there'll be another public hearing and a vote on the ordinance as amended at the next council meeting.
So just to clarify, we're going to take a vote now for the amendment, which I'm going to try and reiterate very quickly, and then at the same time, we'll need a motion to table the resolution till the next day.
No, we're going to vote to amend the ordinance to reflect twenty-five units instead of forty units.
No, 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 Mr. Cologi.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's not what we're amending. She wants to amend it to include twenty-five units after one year.
After one year of what?
Of this being in place. After the forty units being in place, she wants to amend it at after a year, then it goes down to twenty-five units or more.
I'm just trying to understand. So in other words, it would go in as forty units and after one year, it would only be applicable to twenty-five units?
No, she wants.
What about the forty units that have already been?
Twenty-five. She's, she's suggesting that, and correct me if I'm wrong, she's suggesting that after a year, we include the twenty-five units or more also with the forty units. However, I'm asking, would it be too much if we just?
Then I would just suggest we bring that up in a year.
In a year. That's what I was thinking too.
Best way to do it. Then we don't have any problem.
Thank you. So we have the original motion on the floor, though.
I'll withdraw my amendment.
Can we do that?
So it's withdrawn?
Yes, sir.
Understood. Motion's withdrawn. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve, as I understand it, the ordinance as written.
Maybe I have a motion to approve the ordinance twenty-five dash zero-thirty-seven as currently written.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
The second came from Frisbee, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Moving on to Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
I'll come back to Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg. I do have a majority. I'm unable to hear her at this time. Well, we have, we have a majority, so the motion does, the motion does carry. So we'll move on and we will check to make sure that we can make connection with the Councilwoman in a moment.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinance twenty-five dash oh-three-nine, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as eight thirty-nine Prospect Street and identified on the city tax map as block fifty-four-oh-three, lot five pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to Lorraine Robinson and Philip Arthur's for the sale price of fifteen thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero-thirty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Is she here? I think I, I think I see her.
Councilwoman, if you can unmute yourself, I think maybe we'll be able to hear you.
She said she was trying to get on this phone.
She just unmuted herself. Councilwoman, do you have a vote for this ordinance? With all due respect. Okay, moving on to Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
That motion carries as well. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-four-zero, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-six Sylvester Street and identified on the city tax map as block ninety-two-oh-two, lot thirteen pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to Terrence Chu for the sale price of four thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero-forty.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Excuse me. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
She says she's trying, she's trying to unmute. I just asked her if she can call in. She's trying to call in.
I have her on hold here.
Madam President, is she able to use the thumbs up or thumbs down button to maybe reply on screen?
I don't know. Can we do that? Mr. Garcia, I guess so.
Councilwoman, are you able to hear us?
Yes, maybe. I heard you say that you had me on hold. Maybe that's why you guys couldn't hear me.
Maybe. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I voted yes to the previous two, just FYI, and I'm voting yes to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-four-one, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as four forty-nine Stuyvesant Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block forty-nine-oh-four, lot forty-five pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen B five to Derek Tesado for the sale price of three thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five oh forty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-four-two, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as sixteen Eastern Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block two-one-five-oh-four, lot thirteen pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to Jack M. Condi for Condi for the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five oh forty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-four-three, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-six Fountain Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block seventy-one-oh-two, lot twenty-three pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to Shamar Santo for the sale price of fifteen thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero forty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-four-four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-two and sixty-seven Oak Street, comma, two-oh-two Passaic Street, one forty Spring Street, three twenty-three and four ninety-eight West Hanover Street and identified on the city tax map as block eighteen-oh-one, lot six, block eighteen-oh-three, lot eighty-seven, block twenty-one-oh-four, lot twenty-five, block four-oh-oh-three, lot twenty-six, block thirty-seven-oh-eight, lot eleven, and block twenty-three-oh-one, lot twenty-six pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to BL Investor Group LLC for the sale price of forty thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero forty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Oh, excuse me. Hold on one second. One more time, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-four-five, ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-four-oh-one-nine and ordinance twenty-five-oh-oh-two to correct a lot designation. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero forty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-four-six, an ordinance providing for the safe storage of firearms within the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? See. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Terry Martinenko, two-seven-two Hillcrest Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. And as a member of Mercer County Moms for Gun Sense in America, I am going to talk about the ordinance and why I support it. We partner with the Be Smart program to educate parents about safe storage, and I'm speaking for myself in support of this safe storage ordinance as a survivor of the Arteron Night Mass Shooting on six eighteen, twenty eighteen. I experienced firsthand the shock and panic from gunfire and the victims that resulted. But the hardest part of gun violence, it's that it's the leading cause of death of our children and teens. And why? Parents who thought a child was safe with a gun in the house when in fact they were not. Also, there are many veterans who die from suicide with a gun, and this is preventable. If you would, please Google moments that survive to hear the tragic stories of children who are no longer with us because they had access to a gun, and also the stories of devastation of suicides when that gun could have been stored away from the person who used it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash forty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. I fully expect this ordinance to pass, and I'm very happy to put my support for it. But I would like to ask if potentially the clerk's office or somehow, administration can send out a press release to the public so we can disseminate that this ordinance is coming online so many members of our city of Trenton can know that this is a requirement going forward. I think that'd be very important because sometimes we pass ordinances and the public doesn't find out about them until they crime and get a ticket or whatever the charge may be. And it could be very good in prevention. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? We're good, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
I'm proud to sponsor this ordinance, and my answer is yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-four-seven, an ordinance. Ordinance twenty five dash oh four seven an ordinance regulating the parking of vehicles near stop signs. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion.
President?
Oh. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Thank you. Um, I just had one question because there was kind of wavering answers from my own research and fright by People that I spoke to and I just wanted to make sure That it is legal to supersede the state statute on this ordinance. And I I can't recall if I did ask this at the last council meeting or not, but I just wanted to be sure. Um, I do think that this is wonderful as it will allow more parking and a lot of my residents have asked for this. I just want to make sure that we are Within state statute guidelines.
Thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg. I believe you did ask that the last meeting um and I'll let Mr. Koloji respond if he'd like because I know he did the research on it.
Yeah, Councilwoman, it's specifically um I it it's it's actually specifically sanctioned by the statute all of the changes that we made as a municipality. It gives us certain rights to do certain things as long as we don't interfere with what the statute says regarding a school zone, et cetera. And we've, you know, we're, I think we're in totally full compliance. So I think it would be sustainable.
Okay, I couldn't hear anything you said, but I um imagined that it was positive and it answered my question and need affirmative.
Thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg. And just
Thank you.
And just um a brief um background as to why this was created. Um after listening to several, obviously, we all know the parking issues that are going on in the city. And so we're trying to come up with as many solutions as possible. So just even speaking to the um gentleman who spoke earlier and was speaking at a a couple of meetings ago. We thought that was kind of a a s- a short term solution that we can actually try to adjust The stop signs, um the parking within stop signs so that we can a accommodate more parking wherever we can. We're still doing the studies in the city. I know um a couple of us have met, Council Vice President and I, we've been speaking about doing um Getting a study done without the, within the city. They're coming up with different places where we can add more parking onto the streets. And this was just one way That we can kind of um accommodate more vehicles from a corner, from a stop sign um and where you can park in fifty Feet to twenty five feet, we thought was reasonable. It's enough space for a person to actually turn with the truck and um Get around an actual corner without hitting another vehicle. So this was the reason why um I was able to um put this forth. So I just want to say thank you all Who are in support of this. We can go to a motion.
Madam, I'm sorry, I'm still looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I thought we did that.
No.
I'm sorry, I thought that was, I thought we went straight to the Councilwoman.
Okay.
What was the motion?
Me. To approve, yes.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah.
Moving on to resolutions, Madam President. Are there any Resolutions that you wish to or that you or the rest of the council wish to extract for Possible questions or for a, from a possible consent agenda?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, one second, Councilwoman Feliciano and I'm ready.
Thank you. One eighty four, one eighty five, one eighty seven, one eighty eight, one eighty nine, two oh five, one ninety one.
Just say all of them, it's like no. One ninety one, you said?
Yes. One, one ninety three, one ninety four, two oh one, two oh three and two oh four. Thank you.
Two oh one, two oh three and two oh four.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Um, yep, one second, it's two oh four. Anyone else?
Um, actually, Council, she
Cover some of them.
Feliciano, I believe, hit them all. And the other um I do, I do want to um ask about twenty five dash zero five zero.
Zero five zero, is that an ordinance or is that a resolution?
That is with the police department.
Oh, zero five zero, that's the first reading.
Oh, that's an ordinance. Yep, never mind.
Okay.
I'll get to him later.
Um, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, one eighty nine?
One eighty nine, uh huh.
One nine two and one nine three.
One nine two, one nine three.
And two hundred.
And two hundred. Council Vice President, you good? I think that's it, Mr. Garcia. So we can start with twenty five dash one eighty four, which is Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. The questions are brief, but I just wanna wanna touch it. Thank you, Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, BA Richardson.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Good evening, Council members.
Thank you. So I like when things like this come up, right? Because then it gives me the opportunity to ask about other stuff that I was curious about. So I'm not really curious about this truck. I'm curious about a fleet listing for all the cars that are assigned to staff. Um, so I'd like to have that I had asked for this before for council under the previous BA um that was here. And so uh if if we could have, council could have a listing of all fleet cars assigned to staff Um along with the hours of usage. Um, and then also are mileage logs maintained for the vehicles? Uh, when staff that is assigned to them use them? Our mileage logs?
You would like, oh, I'm sorry. I I thought that you wanted that as part of the listing that you were.
Well, that you can answer if they do the mileage logs, right? I'm just curious, but Do they keep mileage, do they, are mileage logs maintained by the staff that are assigned uh city vehicles?
Well, I am going to say that I I I know of at least two departments that keep Um, the mileage. And uh, yeah, all departments should be keeping the mileage.
Okay. All right. So if they're not keeping all the mileage, then I would respectfully suggest that Mileage logs should be maintained, just
Noted.
Kind of know where people are going and what's going on. Also, um, I'd like to have the listing for council Um of the fleet cars assigned to staff and the hours assigned so we can see who has them overnight or what it is. Um, right, what it is that they do.
I will follow up with an email just to make sure that I got all the details.
Thank you. Consent.
Thank you.
I think you might as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say twenty five dash one eighty five.
Thank you. Um, I just noticed here it said uh in this resolution of the energy taxes. I think that this is interesting, right? That now we're calling out the state, they were supposed to be giving uh us this money. Uh, they were, but now they're not. Do we have any idea how much we got in um fiscal year twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four from them? Like, what are we talking about as far as uh money to us?
Well, um, fr- from uh municipal aid in this um Not from transitional aid, right? We've received on twenty twenty three, we've received about one million two.
Okay.
In twenty twenty four, we've received about nine hundred thousand dollars. And that was Specifically for road construction.
Mm hmm. Okay. But I think that that's still good, right? When they pay us what they owe us. I mean, you know what I mean? The energy relief on it because we're using it for something and it's not, you're not talking uh chump change on it. So, all right, thank you. I just was curious to know what we got for those two years. Consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes, on this one, um BA Richardson, if you would just explain to us why um that you actually felt a need for this resolution? Well, actually, um, this is um that this was a call uh to all municipalities in New Jersey from the New Jersey League of Municipalities. We are trying to um basically come as a five hundred and some municipalities asking the government, the governor Um, to give, to restore the energy taxes to the municipalities. This, those are taxes that are collected And at the big, uh, years ago, they will go directly to the municipalities. These are, as stated in the um The resolution, those are taxes on gas and electric utilities and were originally collected for To be used by the municipalities. Then the states started to collect them for the municipalities and they will pass it through For several years now, they are um basically using it for other purpose, which they are entitled to do that, but not on a regular basis. So we are basically asking that they give their shared portion to the municipalities.
So we're not getting funds that we would have previously gotten?
Um, we are getting the funds, we are getting funds as municipal aid, correct?
Aid.
But that is less than the portion that we should be getting. And each municipality is getting less than what they should be getting. So The um, the League of Municipalities put a call out for all the municipalities that wanted to pre uh Adopt this resolution to put a little bit of pressure on the governor to give us a better portion Of those taxes that are collected and that they are supposed to come to benefit us.
Thank you. Consent.
Thank you, uh BA Richardson. Um, twenty five dash one eighty seven.
Thank you. This, it's the same question for me for one eighty seven, one eighty eight and one eighty nine. And the question that I have is um, do do we have an organization of interest to to do, to do this work? And does this mean That we um do, like, how does this work? Do we contact certain companies then let them know that they should apply? Like, what is this?
Not yet. Um, this is basically um asking this council To give us permission to procure the services as competitive contracting. Usually for professional services, we will have to um put RFPs, professional services are only for one year. However, uh in certain instances, uh, and I will take, for example, the police um training, right? Um, most likely, all the training that we would like for police to have is not going to happen in one year.
Right.
And so if we procure these services as a regular RFP, right? We will have to limit the contract to one year. That means that fi- past that year, we will have to go again and procure it and Probably if police like the services, but that company is not able to provide it or their prices are too high for different reasons. This is only allowed when you want to have continuity in the services. But in order to procure that way, we first need to get the approval of local government services and the commissioner Of DCA, which we did. And the second step is to get authorization from the council to procure it this way. Once if we get authorization from this council, then we will advertise the services and we will be back To the council with um, once we get um proposals and the proposals get scored the regular Way, then we will be back to this council to get approval to award a contract. At this point, we do not have specific contractors or vendors for those specific services.
So just for clarity, so the difference is the the um professional, you said, is one year only, but doing it this way. And I did read that y'all got the okay from um
Yes, we can do it up to five years.
So you can, it's the length of time?
Yes.
That you can, but you still go out and advertise for it. It's not like you're handpicking anyone.
Yes, we could do it up to five years.
Okay.
Usually what the city does is a two year contract with three uh extensions of one year.
Right.
Depending on the quality of the services or funding.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, consent from me.
For one eighty seven, one eighty eight, one eighty nine?
Yes.
Okay. And Councilwoman Williams um won it, one eighty nine. She had a question for one eighty nine.
I sure do. Thank you. So uh, in reading through this and I went into the uh intent Uh for the um section with training needs assessment and development. And there are several references to the November twenty first report. So is that, I would imagine that is the Department of Justice report?
That is correct.
It's kind of like you're not allowed to say the word Super Bowl, so you say the big game. Um, but I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Yes.
So I was really pleased to see that um Planning is going ahead to carry this through and not an immediate reaction and for carrying for five years. And in response to this, um, have you had any uh review yet with DOJ and what training requirements may come from them? And then also, I know we have to find funding for live Trenton training, which is something this council has requested uh many different times. Um, if you can enlighten us, um, what's going to hopefully happen and maybe the next year or two with the training?
Um, what I can say about that is that the training was almost specified in the report that DOJ Um, sent to the city. However, the director, the police director also identified um different Areas that he considers that the force should be trained on. And for the rest, um, I am not Privy to the information. So probably the law director will be able to respond to some of those questions.
Please.
He's welcome back.
When he comes back.
He's right here. Welcome back in.
Could the director speak to that a little bit for us?
I think we need to ask the question directly.
I love you.
If you could, okay. What I was asking, um, no trouble, we understand. Um, if I was asking if uh perhaps a police director could enlighten us on some of the Training he's hoping to do over the next few years uh that's covered under this Section in the back where training needs assessment and development.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question.
Okay, the question was actually for both of you, so.
Yeah, I thought you said bridges.
Oh, I, no, I'm sorry. Actually, I didn't.
Okay.
That's okay, no worries. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Steve Wilson, Police Director. Um, the training that we'll be um going through uh with regards to this will be uh The training that was pointing out in the DOJ report that we need more help with, that would be uh use of force Uh, Fourth Amendment and rest search and seizure and things of that nature.
And do you expect any of that training, I mean, it's funding contingent, to be live training?
Yes.
Okay, that would, that's.
Yes, that's what, that's what we're, we're trying to get here.
Okay. Um, any uh possible guessma, even as a timeline, when the training can start, if it hasn't already started?
Um, as soon as we get approved for all this, we'll be rolling right along.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, consent, please.
Thank you. That was one eighty nine right now.
Am I?
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thanks. Just real quick, Director Wilson. So when it comes to the various trainings and things, I guess, you know, yeah, from the DOJ report and everything. Um, I I know we have the Arrive Together program and all of that with the the mental health piece of things, but I'm and have been from before when we did the whole um mental health conversation Concerned about the police officers receiving regular training um as it pertains to mental health. Uh, is that a part of this? Like, it's ongoing, like, not just touching it when they come into the academy, but actually doing Um, consistent trainings with the officers as it pertains to de-escalation, mental health, you know, and how to deal with it?
Yes, uh, our de-escalation training, we incorporate it into our biannual training and also um bystander training. Um, in addition to that, um, we've, we've started already with crisis intervention training Um, through the Arrive Together program and we're gonna uh be expanding that to the whole police department. Right now, it's the daytime task force who works directly with um Arrive Together Men uh uh mental health um professionals from Capitol Health, uh but we will be expanding that um to them To the whole department.
And so when things happen and there's an issue, right? And then the people call the Capitol Health Arrive p- people, they're supposed to go out on site?
Yes.
To help the people?
Yes, and then on a regular basis, um, they do follow ups, which is really the most important thing. They do, they don't just do a one time visit. If they're, you know, if there's a person that is identified as needing If they're, you know, if there's a person that is identified as needing help, they will do follow-ups with our, um, Daytime Task Force personnel and, uh, continue getting the help that they, being offered the help, and sometimes they don't take it.
Okay, one last question for you about that. How, how often do you monitor what Capitol Health does? I only ask because I've, I've had concerns, um, in hearing that there may be some deficiencies with their reaction time or whatever, or however they're handling things, like how, how hands-on are you in, in seeing what it is that they do?
I get, I get updates every day at the, our command staff meeting, um, in regards to how many, um, engagements they have, um, with the folks that need the help. So it's pretty much on a regular basis, I get informed on, on how many engagements they have.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Vice President.
I just have one minor question, thank you. I just have one minor question, Director. Um, in the report, it ref, in the, uh, the Training Needs Assessment and Development Scope of Services report, is it a RFP? I'm not sure what this is, but it's alluding to the DOJ report for November 21st report as it's referencing. But, um, is it possible to actually add that in there so people understand what the November 21st report is referencing? So if it can say the DOJ report instead of November 21st report? Or say the DOJ report?
By the language of it. I'm sorry, um, I, I put the specifications for that, um, competitive, well, for this resolution, for the competitive contracting, right? When we, uh, put the, out of the competitive contracting out, the, the report will be an attachment for the vendors that will be applying. That will be information that will be available for them to, to read before they prepare their proposal.
Okay, and this is, this is online, this is public record?
It will be once, um, you adopt the resolution. This resolution is only giving the city the, the ability to procure as competitive contracting, nothing else.
Okay, I'm just looking at it from an outside point of view. When people are reading this and they're like, well, what is the November 21st report? It omits that information, and though maybe unintentional, but I just want to be a little bit more informative as to what the November 21st report actually is. So anyone looking up this document, because it will become a historical fact down the line, they'll know what it's talking about?
Yes, and that information will be spelled out in the, in the procurement process, definitely. And yeah, it could have been spelled out in this one, there is no reason not to. It's a public document at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And I was going to say, I have one quick question on Councilwoman, just to Councilwoman Feliciano's point, while we were kind of on the subject about the Arrive Together, um, Police Director, um, I know some of the concerns that have been mentioned to Councilwoman Feliciano and myself, just for me, for clarity, I heard her say if someone reaches out to them, does a person have to, like, some, if I'm calling for an emergency, I have to reach out to the Arrive Together, the Capitol Health? Or do I contact the police?
The old, the old way that was done, crisis outreach is still in play here. So, um, if there is something in the instant moment, and just say, um, emergency first responders show up, whether that be police, fire, or EMS, and there's somebody in distress, the old, um, crisis outreach is in play.
They automatically come out?
They will, well, they will call, the dispatcher will notify, um, crisis outreach over at fold, and then they'll send as soon as they can.
So is that up to the individual calling the emergency? Is it, right, okay, I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Yeah, um, Arrive Together does not replace the old, the old way we used to do it.
Okay.
It's in addition to.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano.
I was going to say, thank you, Council President. Um, to Council Vice President's point about, because I actually had wrote the note drawing it to the DOJ report, I think that it is important that we do note that in here, because it does show that the city is addressing the concerns of the report. Um, so I would, I would say that it does need to be, um...
The section of the report.
It does need to be added, that it does need to say areas outlined in the November 21th DOJ report. Because this, again, could be looked at as, well, what is that? And I, and I get it, where BA Richardson said it would be attached to the back, but I think that for documentation purposes, to show that we are not skating away from it, and we are addressing the issues in that report, I do agree with, um, Council Vice President that it should, it should be listed under the, um, under the goals and objectives as well.
Council President, if I may just, uh, add some additional information to this?
Yes, Director Bridget.
Yeah, I think the, the reference to the report was really, um, uh, trying to be overly transparent and overly, um, detailed with respect to the purpose of this, um, with respect to the public's looking at what's happening with that DOJ report. We are still, um, meeting with DOJ, and that report will be addressed in a subsequent agreement that will be brought before this council. So, um, it's really kind of a, a two-step process. We're saying, notwithstanding even before we enter into any agreement to, uh, engage in any training or modifications that DOJ US Attorney wants, even before that, we're going forward and seeking this type of training, this type of certification. One of the heels of that varies shortly, probably within the next couple of meetings, will be before you discussing the results of our talks with DOJ and the agreements that are going to be put in place to address the concerns that were raised in that report. So, all very good points, I just wanted to clarify, um, that it, it, this, this issue will be before this council a couple of times as it relates to this, the training, the certification, as well as resolution of the underlying report and recommendations.
So, I'm sorry, Council President? Thank you. So then to that point, if you're saying that this was already being done, Director Bridges, prior to, or like, the, the November 21st report, didn't have anything really to do with it, that we didn't have to mention it at all?
It, we, we didn't have to mention, it had something to do with it, but if you recall, just by way of background, we were also waiting for training purposes, because we were also waiting on a, a report from DCA with respect to some of their recommendations. So we've been kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for all these other agencies to give us advice, and the, the, we, we got to the point, we decided to do this regardless of what any investigation said, regardless of what the discussions were, that we wanted to do this to get this training for the Police Department.
Okay.
Council President, may I clarify something?
Okay, yeah.
Um, and for this resolution, right, um, the attachment that you are referring to is basically the scope of services. Um, that is really not part of this resolution, is there just for reference? Um, but I can make those, uh, corrections for the scope of service before we, uh, make the information, before we procure the services. I definitely can do that. But that, that language is really not part of this resolution, because that's not the matter that we are talking about. It's just, this is just requesting your permission to procure as competitive contracting. It's the same language for all three resolutions.
Right.
But I can definitely correct the, the scope of services.
Thank you. Consent.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilwoman, oh, you, you asked it.
No, that was...
Okay. Sorry.
No, it's okay, I'm glad you both followed up, because I, I was, I was trying to get to that point, that you can't just say, you know, November 21st. That's not going to mean anything to anybody, so I'm glad you, uh, you and Council Vice President brought that up, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good, consent?
Yes.
Thank you, consent agenda, Mr. Garcia. Um, uh, 25-0205.
Okay.
And that is Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So just a quick question, um, I see you, you want a resolution of support for New Jersey Transit application, uh, that's great. How do we get benches, um, at the bus stops, though? And then the covers to prohibit the rain on the people since NJ, you know, since New Jersey Transit wants us to say yay, uh, wha, you know, can we, do we go to them and ask them for that? Because constituents are asking for benches at bus stops, right? And they want the cover when they stand, you know, or have to wait for the bus to come? Is that something we can go to, uh, them and ask for?
Um, yes, Councilwoman Feliciano, but I need to say that you don't lose an opportunity.
Right, I'm using every chance I got, I says, we're here.
We can put a request to New Jersey Transit for that.
Okay, so I would respectfully ask that we do that, that we put in a request to New Jersey Transit for benches at the bus stops, um, and then the, the covers for the people. So those that have to take public transportation when the bad, when the weather is bad, they, they have, um, some kind of shelter over top. Thank you, consent.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Frisbee?
With that, um, uh, on the heels of, um, Councilwoman Feliciano, if we would also make sure that where, um, these benches and the covers are at these bus stops, that there is a light?
Lighting.
As well, because all of those bus stops do not have lighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will ask.
25-191, uh, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Okay, thank you. Director Bridges, I guess?
Yes.
Hi. So just real quick, just to refresh our memories, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, the, the last, whereas, uh, the dollar amounts, right? The, the hourly rates, 175 for partners, 135 for attorneys, and 85 for paralegals. Where, what was, where were we at with the rates before this?
Uh, that's the same rates we've been operating under for five years. It was initially 155 under prior Law Director Denson, and he increased it to 75 to try to get a little bit, um, more response to the RFPs. It's been that way for about four years now. However, just, um, for council's benefit, we do have select council that have special, um, unique abilities where we pay them 220. So for example, our bond council, um, is, the bond council rate is not 175, it's 220, as well as, um, the utilities, uh, council that we're using for litigation, um, emanating from TWW. Um, aside from those, everybody's at 175, and that 175 is, um, also pursuant to DCA's mandate, um, as it relates to retention of outside counsel.
Okay, and then in the title, just, just to be clear, because I'm, I'm looking, it says not to exceed a million. So it says not to exceed 450,000? But then under the noun therefore, it says not to exceed 1.45 million? Where?
Legal.
Seeing that the noun therefore be resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute contracts, total revised amount not to exceed 1,450,000? But in the title, it says not to exceed 450,000, am I missing something?
Need to see, sorry, Councilwoman, I just did, I'm pulling, I need to look at the actual resolution.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe it was...
Yeah, I, I think the issue is the title is somewhat, I, 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 I take it you're talking about the title to make it more clear that we're, because the initial amount was the 1 million, what we're doing is increasing that amount to address additional work that's coming in, so we had to make that amendment. So I think amending, what we need to do is authorize an additional funding contract that was awarded to multiple vendors for those years in an amount not to exceed the million, to increase it by 450 per calendar year.
Right, I see, I see where you have now the 300,000 and the 150, to, well, to get to the 450, but yeah, it just was a little...
I cannot, I mean, we can, we can do that amendment on the floor?
Thank you.
So we're going to amend that to, uh, Resolution, uh, 25-105 to authorize an additional funding to the contract that was awarded to multiple vendors for CY 25-26 in an amount not to exceed 1 million, increased by 450,000 per calendar year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Or what we say, additional funding of 400, uh, to the contract of 450,000?
Per ca, per calendar year, yes.
Per calendar year, something like that, right? Director Bridges, where we at?
Is that going on number one, Director Bridges?
That was, that was in the, uh, I, I thought we were putting that in the title.
Just in the title to clarify what's happening.
To clarify what's in the body.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So can you say it again, so that we hear what it is again? The amendment?
A resolution, um, Resolution, amending Resolution 25-101, 105, excuse me, to authorize additional funding to the contract that was awarded to multiple vendors for CY 25 and CY 26 in an amount not to exceed $1 million. Increased by $450,000 per calendar year.
Not to exceed 1 million?
Increasing that by $450,000 per calendar year.
And increasing that.
I'm sorry, I ain't mean to make this difficult. Wouldn't it be easy to say, to authorize additional funding of 400, like, to the...
Yeah.
You put the 450,000 first before we get into the million?
A resolution authorizing an additional 450,000 per calendar year.
Right.
To Resolution 25-105, authorizing, uh, contract that was awarded to multiple vendors for CY 25 and CY 26.
Right.
I don't want to add not to exceed? Or leave that part out?
Yeah, you add not to exceed 245,000 per calendar year, yes, Council President.
Okay. So are we good to add that on consent, or are you still looking through?
Oh, yeah, no, consent.
Consent with the amendment?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
Thank you. Garcia, you good, you got that?
Well, uh, yes, but I'm going to ask the solicitor, do we need to take that amendment, that, vote for that amendment at this time? Thank you. So, Madam President, if you want us for a motion to approve that amendment?
May we have a motion to approve the amendment to 25-191?
So moved.
Second.
Noted, roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion carried, amendment passed. I believe we're at 192 then?
One, I'm sorry, yes, 192, um, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Uh, so my questions regarding this director, uh, regarding 192 and 193. Uh, can you talk about how, uh, these, if they're approved tonight, will improve, uh, the department's response to opioid abuse and some of the, uh, issues we have, potentially overdoses? Um, so I know, um, the department, you know, responds to so many calls each year, and it's been a growing problem.
Okay, uh, Steve Wilson, Police Director. Uh, 192, uh, we were awarded, and it, um, $33,000 and some change from, uh, an award that we got back in 2020 to establish an opioid response team. So, um, I think the state saw that we're doing a good job, so they gave us some extra money, um, $33,000 worth. Um, 193, um, is, is relative to our opioid response teams, specifically recovery advocates, and, um, how, how that benefits is they specifically target those who are addicted, um, and offer services to them, also mental health. to them, also mental health, services to them, and this resolution ensures that we will have that service for the next two years with the, with the option to extend further.
Would it be possible, so recovery advocates, obviously they have a long history of being able to work with folks in treatment, would it be possible for any efforts to go to where some of the campsites are in the city to actually do more outreach on site before we have an incident for opioid? Maybe, I know we have a lot of cases, like people have Narcan, I have Narcan from when I worked in services, but you want to be able to hopefully help folks after they have an overdose or before they have their next one.
They, well, we actually do do that with recovery advocates, and if you want the detailed information, the Director of Recovery Advocates is here. But like I said, this resolution is to make sure that their services are with us for the next couple of years going forward.
That would be great to hear from her, thank you.
Thank you, Director, and good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Ross, I'm the Executive Director with Recovery Advocates of America, and we are privileged to run the program through, for the city and the Trenton Police Department called the Opioid Overdose Response Team. I'm a person in long-term recovery, I just celebrated ten years of recovery. Thank you. I, I, the city is where I spent most of my time homelessness, so this program is near and dear to my heart, and so are the participants that we help out on the streets. We go directly, weekly, out to the encampments, out to the abandoned buildings, out to all the hotspots where people overdose, where people are using, and we just show up and we build trust. Over the couple, few years, we have been really lucky to have helped so many people from panhandling, you know, the women of the streets and things like that, like, we get out and we meet them where they're at, and we build that trust. And that's why we are so privileged, because it doesn't happen right away for everyone. It, it takes time, because we lose trust in the community, in the police, and we're also bridging that gap to be able to let them know that the police are not against them, like, we are trying to build the community together again, and we partner with so many of the, all the different organizations in the city of Trenton. We have huge outreaches, we just had one on Friday, we got rained out at noon, but we service about sixty-five people right from down bottom, South Broad Street off of twenty-nine. So we hand out Narcan, we are, we, we do follow-ups, we get them rides to treatment, clothing, anything they need to remove the barriers to get them to go and get treatment, and we follow up with them. And we've actually had participants come back with years sober, a couple of years sober, and actually help out in the outreaches where we give haircuts and food and clothing and all the resources that they need.
Thank you. And I actually, I'm really happy you're here to be able to speak upon this, because it's important for us to know what we're doing, what you all are doing. And then also, maybe I can beg the question, you know, obviously, resources aren't infinite, and, you know, we don't have all the money in the world to help this problem, and certainly much more is needed. Are there any areas or a few things that our city could be doing more with in the future, or do better in the future that we should be looking at?
So just my opinion, the city of Trenton does offer a lot of treatment services. I'm a big supporter of having, I wish we could have an inpatient residential treatment center that deals with substance use disorder and mental health issues, because we have a lot of space in the city, I know there's a lot of buildings and things like that. As far as, you know, there isn't a ton of money, and, and we do our best, I have a lot of contacts, I am born and raised here for fifty-four years, I gave my age away, but, so I know a lot of people, and people are very willing to help donate anything, we get clothing from the public, anything that we need. As, as far as it's just basically, we have this mobile unit now, so, so we're hoping to, it needs some repairs, it's an older unit, but, you know, hopefully, the city can help with some of the repairs with that, so we can continue to go right out to them, and we're going to do mini-outreaches right in the certain specific areas, we're starting that this year. So actually, we're going to have one in, in the next month.
Well, thank you very much, and congratulations on your recovery, Stacy.
Thank you so much.
Consent agenda for me?
Thank you.
Council President?
I was going to say for one ninety-three, Councilwoman Feliciano and Williams, I think.
Thank you. Just a quick question for you, thank you. Congratulations on your recovery, your time period. And thank you for looking to help the people. So just for clarity, I was reading through everything, right? And the, the team analytics and stuff, and I got to the part where the participation, interactions and outcome, and you have point of contact chart back here. Can you just explain, I mean, based on what you just said, just explain, so you have street meets, right? And in November twenty-four, you have two. What does that mean?
So street meets are, we have different names for the program. So street meets is where we go out weekly. It has been once a week, because we do give a lot of items, and for budget costs, we have to only, you know, do it once a week, so we go right out.
You only did two?
Some weeks we'll do two. So what we were doing was, we were hitting it in the morning to get the women on South Broad Street, and, and we were breaking it up between panhandling and sometimes the women that are on South Broad. So we would do early morning, going out early, trying to hit both, but I think we, we found it more, it, it was more helpful that we just went out once and went all over to those different areas. We added some more hours to going out to be able to service both, all, all demographics of people that are out there.
So it says totals, right? For November twenty twenty-four, of everything you did, meeting them in the library, meeting them on the hotline, meeting them in the court, meeting them in the street, seven?
Seven participants that went to treatment? I don't have the analytics in front of me, and unfortunately, my admin person is away on vacation.
So I guess, so you, you just said something, you said seven that went to treatment, but that, this number doesn't mean that these are the number of people that you saw during the time, right? Because I'm looking at five hundred thousand dollars, and I'm thinking y'all saw seven people, what are we doing?
We are now up to giving seventy bags to each participant every week, care packages, clothing, and other items, so our numbers are pretty high.
So I think, so I think to, to make it make a little more sense, right? Because when we're looking at the salaries and all this other kind of stuff, and what you're, and what you're looking for, and what you're looking to do, when you're, when you're putting these outcomes, I guess, or maybe something together, if we just had, like, the number of people that you actually touched?
I'm going to get a revised, a revised version of that and get that over to the Director, and he can get that over to you, because we do have that, I don't know what, which one you're looking at, the newest one?
I mean, I see the, like, I see care packages, you know, I don't, I don't know, so.
What does it say for care packages on that? Curious.
The total for, from November twenty-three to November twenty-four, two thousand six hundred and ninety-four care packages that were given out?
That's correct.
Uh-huh, okay. All right, I just wanted to know what all that meant with the chart, because like I said, when I saw seven, I was like, yeah.
I'll have a deeper explanation of each one, and I'll have Trina work on that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilwoman, you good with that, right?
Thank you.
Consent, thank you. And one ninety-four, Councilwoman Feliciano?
Okay. Thank you.
Hello.
So when, in reading this, right, I get it, they do the click it or ticket campaign where they're, they're focusing on it. How come, just out of curiosity, how come when we initially did this, the focus was only in the east ward?
The east ward had a lot of different issues, so we targeted the, the more hotspot issues in the city.
Okay. Because it said during last year's enforcement period, we focused on the east ward of the city, which consists of mainly Hispanic demographic. This year, we will expand to other, the other three wards in an attempt to further relay the importance of seatbelt usage. So I, I get it, and then to hit a more diverse population, that's why I was asked in the question about why, why did we focus, because it kind, I was like, well, I hope it wasn't only because they were Spanish folks.
We, we had, we had a lot of issues with the traffic enforcement in that area, so that's where we targeted.
Okay, but now you, y'all going to target the whole city?
Yes.
Okay. When are we getting, are we getting radar detector guns? Did we talk about that, about people?
We, we do have radar operators and cars that are equipped with radar. We have a couple of guns, but we need more operators.
Okay. All right.
And that, that will expand as the Police Department replaces the vacancies, we will, we will have that traffic unit, which will do these type of things.
Okay. Thank you. Consent.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Councilwoman Feliciano jogged a couple of things in my brain. So one question is, and this happened occurred last week, I was driving on Mark Street, and a mother is driving two children in the car, doesn't have car seats for them, and they both looked like they were under two years of age. Do we, and I believe this came up from one, maybe one of my colleagues about a year or so ago, do we offer as a police department free car seats like Hamilton does, and also installation, or is that something we could look at doing with the grant?
Yeah. Well, not with the click it or ticket grant, that has to be specific to click it or ticket. As, as far as a car seat, our Community Affairs Unit does teach and do giveaways, and they also teach how to install the car seats in, in vehicles, but I think that's actually through donations.
Okay, so we would have to, and I apologize, but I wanted to use this opportunity, so that's something we would have to set up totally separate?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, again, I'll, I'll hold my other question for another time. Thank you.
Okay.
Consent agenda?
Thank you. The next one is Councilwoman Williams with twenty-five dash two zero zero.
Thank you very much. Questions for Director Harris? Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening.
My question regarding this, it was very thorough as far as all the information on the bidding, et cetera, but trying to exactly divine what we're physically going to see at the end of the day with the expansion and everything, the way it's worded, I just wanted to ask you to come, so if you could explain what's actually going to happen, so what will the public see at the end of this beginning, you know, because Battle Monument Park is a state park, but then there's the portion that we as a city are responsible for, and I'm very excited this is going to happen, actually, but I just wanted to learn from you, from myself and others.
Yes, I can just tell you from the specification sheet, we are going to be doing, removing or replacing Bluestone, will be adding a number of trees, will be adding interpretive signage, will be adding benches, will be adding across from the park, you're driving down Boulevard now, you're, there's an unsightly bin where they, you can put clothes in, that people tend to leave all around, and then there's, so there is, we're going to be taking a, that's city property, so a portion of that property will now be brick, on the other side will be brick, on the, on the side where the maternal center is going will be brick, so what you'll have is tip of the bottom monument, there'll be a brick sidewalk all the way around, and then in the park itself, again, there'll be a number of items from bollards to interpretive signage, a big medallion will be placed, bronze medallion will be placed in the ground, talking about the battle and a number of other things, but there'll be improvements, a number of improvements.
And do you have a timeline for all this to occur?
Two months.
Two months.
So you're going to approve this, if, assuming you approve this, it'll be two months, the vendor has two months to complete the job. And we're doing this because, you know, Trenton two fifty, right? So what we're trying to do is bits and pieces where we can find money to make improvements. And I'm big on interpretive signage, you're going to see more of that, because a lot of people don't know our history and a lot of key sites, so you're going to see those everywhere now.
And we, I just have one quick question, because it's always something when people come to the Battles of Trenton, they always ask, do we exactly know where the first shot was fired, and can we put a marking nearby there?
I don't know the answer to that, but we, there, we are hope to put out an RFP to be able to do his markers throughout the city to identify those, just what you said. So we have a team, and we have, there's a Trenton two fifty committee, we meet on a regular basis with principals here, from the state, the county, and we're just putting some things together.
And then any word or rumor about the elevator, it's going up to the top, I know it's a dream of everybody?
It is, it's a million dollar dream, so, yeah, no one's interested in moving forward at this point, but we're going to keep pushing it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, thanks.
Consent agenda, please?
Thank you. Next, we have twenty-five dash two zero one, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Council President, I don't have any questions on twenty-five, two oh one, or two oh three, I only have a question on twenty-five, two oh four.
Okay, so you're taking it off?
Thank you.
So consent?
Yes, consent for those two, yes.
Two oh two and two oh three, Mr. Garcia?
Thank you.
So two oh four?
Yep, thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, Director Simple?
Good evening.
Hey.
Sean, Director of Wardensure.
So I see that we're giving the State Police Bank sixty-three thousand six eighty-nine, just for clarity, they made overpayments, is that because for a while they were making estimated payments?
That's correct.
Okay. So what are we doing, or what have we done, are we working to eliminate this whole estimated payment thing?
Yes, we have a very good program going with fixing estimated rates. This case came, went back to COVID, where we didn't have access to the, to the compound, and we were not able to read the meter, so we continued billing them, and, and the state workers, all, you know, they don't work every day.
Right.
The building was almost empty for the most part, and so we continued billing them by estimates, and they paid the bill. So now that we have access back to read the meter, right, we had a malfunction with one of the meters there, and it turns out that we owe them this amount of money. We tried to cred, give them credit, but they wanted back, it's too much money for them to, not to be.
Thank you. I just wanted to clear it up and just talk about, like, what we're doing to eliminate this whole estimated payment thing, right?
It's a long, it's a, it's a great, huge problem that we're working on.
Okay. Thank you. Consent, Madam President?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That looks like the resolutions, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Madam President. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of, well, I don't see anything that's excluded, is there?
No, so maybe you have a motion to approve the consent agenda of twenty-five dash one eighty-three, one eighty-four, one eighty-five, one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, two zero five, one ninety, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, one ninety-three, one ninety-four, one ninety-five, ninety, one ninety-six, one ninety-seven, one ninety-nine, two hundred, two hundred and one, two hundred and two, two hundred and three, and two hundred and four.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Council, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero twenty-two, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-five Damon Street, and identified on the city tax map as block one one zero zero three, lot fifty pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen B five to Aneede M Cunningham for the sale price of two thousand five hundred dollars. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe you have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Council, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-one, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one forty-one to one forty-seven West Ingham Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block sixty-eight oh four, lot thirteen pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C to Ulochi Global Investments LLC for the sale price of thirty thousand dollars. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero thirty-one.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero thirty-three. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-six, forty-eight, and fifty Tyrell Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block eighteen oh three, lots nineteen, eighteen, and seventeen pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C to Tyrell Street Redevelopment LLC for the sale price of fifteen thousand dollars. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero thirty-three.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards? Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero four eight, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-four Hart Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block two one four oh three, lot sixteen pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C to Asiada Ibrahim for the sale price of five thousand dollars.
Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero forty-eight.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero four nine, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-seven Tyrell Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block seventeen oh one, lot fifty pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve dash thirteen B five to Ruth Rose Hawkins for the sale price of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Maybe we have a motion, uh, blah blah. Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero forty-nine.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash fifty, an ordinance appointing the classification of class-two special law enforcement officers in the Department of Police.
May, we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty.
So moved.
Second?
Councilwoman?
Public first. I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions regarding this. Um, so specifically, um, in reading the portion under chapter two, uh, letter B, that the class-two officers uh, shall be authorized to exercise full powers and duties similar to those of a permanent, regularly-appointed, full-time police officer. The use of a firearm by the officer of this class may be authorized only after the officer has been fully certified as successfully completing training as prescribed by the Police Training Commission. And then about the salary range, twenty-five dollars and thirty-five dollars an hour. So I have some concerns. I'd like to get information on, on the requirements, uh, physical experience and so forth for this position. If they're gonna have all the uh, full powers and duties similar to a regular Trenton officer as well as, uh, I'm assuming they would not necessarily be required to be part of a police union. Additionally, you know, with that, that rate is definitely lower than what our off-duty officers would get for such an assignment. And then, um, where are we recruiting these officers from and what type of training will they have received?
Steve Wilson, Police Director. Class-two officer will go through a, the PTC Certified Police Academy, um, specifically for, um, class-two. They will have the same authority while, while working as a, as a full-time police officer. They will go through the same training that a police officer does and have the same equipment.
So why would they not, and this is, I know this is, this is your decision, it's U E C's financial decision. But why not hire a Trenton officer if they're gonna have the same, you know, duties and responsibilities and also legal ramifications to their actions?
This is a way of bolstering the manpower, but, uh, class-two officers, I want to make it clear, they do not supplant full-time police officer positions. We are budgeted for two hundred and eighty-nine and we will still move that way for full-time, uh, police officers. This is a way to, um, bolster our manpower.
Okay, so would they have qualified immunity?
They will have the, the same as a, a full-time police officer while they're working, yes.
Council President, I may, and Councilwoman Williams, yes, yes, um, they would have the same protections, immunities that any, um, city employee would have. Just by way of background, this is a program that's been very, uh, successful across the street and really it's an opportunity for us to kind of have like a, a farm system, so to speak, where you can have folks that are certified and, and officers that are coming in and doing obviously not police-related duty, but quasi-police-related duty. And then we have a, like I said, a farm system to, to, to backfill from as positions become available for those off, uh, class-two officers that are successful and are performing well. We have the ability to, you know, seamlessly bring them in right away. They're already gonna be certified. They already understand the policies, procedures, and how this, uh, TPD works. So it's really a good feeder program and something that's been very successful throughout the state. But they, they would have the same immunity, same protections, same training and what have you. They just wouldn't have the same responsibilities until they became full, uh, sworn, uh, police officers with the city.
And so thank, that gets really good information. So then why would they, what would be holding them back from becoming full officers? And then, you know, having everything be exactly the same, but also, you know, obviously the rate would be a higher rate because they would be a, a full officer. Because are they gonna be wearing a uniform? Will it have a patch for TPD? It sort of, it definitely sounds like that.
They'd be wearing a uniform but not the police uniform. They would be, they would have to be distinguished from actual officers that are, you know, outdoing full-fledged police officer duties. They'd be doing things like transportation, um, uh, you know, security, uh, what have you, but, uh, they would, they would have a uniform, yes.
Also be distinctive, kind of like a hired security guard type of situation, but they would have a firearm?
They would not have a firearm.
Okay, but they're trained.
They will, they will.
They would have, they would have.
While they're working, they'll, they'll, they'll have a firearm. And the funding comes from U E Z. Would, they, they will be down in the downtown area. That's where they'll be assigned. That's why we could use that money from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five oh fifty. No, we have.
I'm sorry, Madam President, it looks like we had a motion and a.
We already had a motion.
Motion and a second. I'll call the roll. Uh, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash fifty-one, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as four fifty-seven West Hanover Street, twenty-nine Marion Street, three fifteen, three two twenty-three, and three twenty-seven Rutherford Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block twenty-three oh three, lot twenty, block forty-six oh one, lot eight, block forty-six oh one, lots forty-five, forty-one, and thirty-nine pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve dash thirteen C, S M Trenton Redevelopment LLC for the sale price of one hundred thousand dollars. And Madam President?
Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-one.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano? Councilwoman Figaro Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh five two. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-one North Olden Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block two six zero zero three, lot sixteen pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C to Yois Maria Lainez Reyes for the sale price of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-two.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash fifty-three, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as ten Beak Street and identified on the city tax maps block eighty-seven oh three, lot thirteen pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve dash twelve C to Hector Weir for the sale price of four thousand dollars.
Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-three.
So moved.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we all kind of have the same question.
Yeah, we all have the same question.
Same question to Director Bridges.
My apologies.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, this is a, a city employee, and so I think we all have the same question. Is it okay that he is able to purchase a property? It's, it's, I'm sorry, I can't.
My, go ahead. Excuse me, um, employed or previously employed?
I don't know that he's not employed.
I don't know who that is. Okay, uh, I'm, I'm hearing that he is an employee. There is, there is no prohibition to selling properties to employees. However, you have, there are certain, uh, prerequisites that have to, uh, occur. I was unaware that this was actually an employee, so thank you for bringing that to my attention. I, I would like to pull that, uh, from the administration just so I can confirm that the necessary steps were had, i.e., um, appraisal, arms-length, individual representation. So I thank you for that information. With that, I would like to just pull this until the next meeting so I can look at those issues.
And Director, there is one other employee that I believe we've already, um, voted on, same thing.
I would, I would, uh, I would ask that we pull both of those so I can look at those further.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
It was, it was.
It was for second reading today.
Yeah, and I didn't realize it was for that.
Was it for second or was it for first? I'm sorry. Let me, hold on one second, I'm sorry. This is the first?
This one.
But the, uh, there's another one on there for second reading.
Another employee listed on there, I'll tell you that for sure. There's two, yeah. Forty.
Twenty-five oh four zero. It's legal for them to do, we just don't know what appraisal price to give.
Is that, it passed on a second reading? If, again, uh, with, with the benefit of that information.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, we're trying to look at something too. Go ahead, Director Bridges.
No, with the benefit of that information, anybody in here who is a city employee, um, I think we need to pull that just simply to confirm that the proper steps were uh, had with respect to that. And if it has passed, now with that information, I would, uh, suggest the council uh, make a motion to revisit that passing and, and then have the administration pull that so we can confirm uh, that the necessary steps have been taken to sell property to a city employee.
So my question then becomes, so we have twenty-three property owners potentially on today's docket. Eleven were for second reading and twelve for, um, first reading. So is there a way of us making an amendment? Because I don't know all the, or listed here, if they are uh, city employees, but that's something we need to look into just to make sure that we're doing things in decency and in order.
For the one that's the first reading, that's gonna be pulled by administration. For the one that was the second reading and then passed with that information, I would suggest the council do a vote to rescind that vote right now to allow the administration time to confirm that the proper steps were, were, were taken, uh, to do that properly.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
So just a quick question. I mean, and I, and I, I do understand the concern and stuff. But we do require people that work here to live here.
No, I, I totally understand that.
You know what I mean? Like, I don't think that we should penalize people that work here from acquiring side lots or whatever it is that they're trying to do, as long as they're, they're paying. You know what I mean? Like what's supposed to be paid? Like as long as there's no discounts, like crazy discounts given or anything like that. I don't think that we should, we should prohibit people, uh, from being able to pu- purchase properties.
I, I agree, um, with you, Councilwoman Feliciano. But I was just gonna ask, Director Bridges, just for us as, um, council members and for the public. What is the process for someone who does work for the city who wants to purchase property?
I, I could tell you at a high level, I'm not gonna be able to tell you chapter and verse, but there has to be, it has to be what's called an arms, arms-length transaction. The individual's gonna have to be represented by council. Internally, we're gonna have to have council, not anyone internally, have those negotiations. There's gonna have to be, um, an appraisal and there has to be articulated why, uh, a certain price has been, uh, decided for that property. And then certain, basically certifications that, um, there was nothing, uh, internally, nothing externally that uh, touched upon the integrity of the process. Um, it, it's, it's a checklist of things. I just don't know if those checklists were done because I was unaware that these individuals were in fact employees.
Council President?
Councilwoman, um.
Frisbee had a question first. But go ahead, were you gonna finish your thought?
But to your, to the Councilwoman's point, yes, we should not discourage or penalize the employees. It's really not only for the city's protection, council's protection, but theirs protection as well. Should anyone raise any issues with respect to that, they can confirm that all the steps were had to properly, um, uh, sell that property to them.
Um, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yeah, so, um, not a question, so it was, it's clarity and actually Director Bridges has, um, hit on it. This is not to discourage because I would, that everyone, um, who desires to be a homeowner, I want them to be a homeowner, whether they are, work for the city or they don't. I just want to make sure that we are doing things in decency and in order so that we don't get caught out there. They may not know the process. And if so, that this is a, um, like again, there are twenty-three that are on here this evening. We just want to make sure that everything is done right so that no one comes back later on and gives them gripe. We end up in Trenton orbit or wherever. So I just want to make sure that we are doing things properly or in Trentonian, any, any place else. I don't want us to be in the news anywhere saying that we did not do things, we did not go through the proper protocol. So that's why I'm asking this question to make sure that we, we're helping them as they're getting this, their properties, um, in order. We're doing our, our due diligence as well.
No, point, point taken, and I, I'm very confident that it was done properly. The director listed and has ample experience with this. But however, I want to look at it independently because I did not look at it with an eye towards those facts. So I just wanna, uh, you know, belt and suspend her to make sure that everybody is, is copasthetic here.
Council President?
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano, then Williams.
So, and thank you for all this. And Councilwoman Frisbee, I'm with you a hundred percent on this. But now I'm even more concerned because we've already went through employees that have already, that have already purchased properties. Like this should have been looked at at the onset, like every, and, and excuse me if I'm wrong. But when the, um, H E D department, when they're bringing these things forward, do they not go through the law department to be looked at? Like, I mean, like, why didn't y'all sit down and have a conversation about what it looks like if it is a city employee? Like, we're here now and we're, and we're checking it now because we've seen, but there were other employees that got properties already. So we should have been checking all along. Like this should have been set up prior to when we said about, when I asked for a checklist, right? In the first place about what are we doing to address all of this with the people buying properties? At that time, if there was anything different or a separate checklist that should have been for employees, it should have been established already or the conversation should have been had because now here we are. We should have already addressed this.
Is that, what does it, is that, I'm confused, is that a question?
I don't know what it is. I'm just making a statement. We should have already addressed this. Now here we are, you know, obviously other conversations just need to be had when we're dealing with all of this kind of stuff. The question that I had was, was when these, when these, um, items are being brought forward from H E D, does your department look at these agreements? Do you look at the applications and stuff? Like, do y'all read them?
My department doesn't, uh, my department doesn't do it. I do it.
So you, so, but you didn't look at these, Director?
I looked at all of them, but I did not, I was unaware that these contracts were employees, I think.
But it says in the application, these are employees, like it's written there, city employees, city employ, like it's there.
If, then if they say city employees, and you have to appreciate, I haven't probably looked at these for three weeks. If they say city employees?
They do.
Then we have looked at this requirements to sell them to employees. I didn't recognize the name, but if it says a city employee, there is a checklist that we go to to make sure that the steps were followed. the steps were followed to send, to sell to employees, I just didn't recognize the names as we sit here, and I still don't recognize them, so I'm, as I said earlier, I'm very confident that it was done properly, however, not knowing these individuals' names nor recalling when I signed it, I would, I'd, I'd like to be overly cautious and look at it again to reconfirm that those steps were had prior to transitioning these properties to city employees.
Thank you, so then based on what you just said, because it says city employee, you said then you did look at it and you are certain that the checklist, so they do say city employee on the application, so we don't have to pull it, we can move forward because it says city employee on them?
I would say yes, and if I find that to be inaccurate, I will, I will respond to it, but I was kind of acquiescing, the council's concerned to pull it beforehand, but if it said city employees, we've looked at those steps that had to be take to sell to employees, we have sold, as you correctly stated, we have, we have sold properties to employees in the past, and when we determine that they are employees, we take the added necessary steps to confirm that it's being done as an armed-length agreement to rebut any concern of any impropriety or any improper dealings with properties, so that is an automatic mechanism when we see employees to check off the box for those additional steps that need to be had for employees.
Okay, so Council President, Councilwoman Frisbee, because he, he said, because it says employee, he did his due diligence and he said it on the record, so are we good with moving forward with this?
I still have something to say. I know Councilwoman Williams wanted to add something also.
Thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate it, so I think it's a good question to discuss, even if it does say it, because one of the things this council's had to deal with over the last two years is a pretty incessant barrage of folks who say that the purchasing process is unfair, that the purchasing process has favored folks outside the city versus folks inside the city, we've had complaints about people being let in to see properties where others weren't able to be let in to see properties, so we've had all kinds of things go on, and one of the things I'm very proud of this council is, we've all advocated strongly that the process become more fair, whether it was moving from auctions to direct sales or whatever the situation might be, unfortunately, when it comes to city employees purchasing properties, they're gonna be held to a higher level of scrutiny, there's gonna be questions whether they had favoritism, there's gonna be things that are said that are unfair, and Mr. Bridges talked, touched upon it earlier about reputation, and one of the things I always come back to is a gentleman, I believe he was Secretary of the Treasury back in the eighties, named Nicholas Brady, and he was falsely accused of having mob ties and nefarious things by the federal government, and has a very long trial, bankrupted him, bankrupted his family, and when he came out of the courthouse, the first thing he said to the cameras was, where do I get my reputation back? And that's something I always keep in mind, particularly with things that are said about our work together as a team, and I think it is, is fair to make sure that next, extra questions or confidence is gained that nobody had a favoritism towards purchasing one property versus another, I don't believe it occurred in this case, I'm, I'm very happy that, you know, we do list whether someone's a city employee, but it is a question I think we need to consider for the future, if maybe one more level of scrutiny needs to occur or maybe a clearer process, so then the public itself, not our critics, but the public has full confidence that everything is square when the city sells a property in the city of Trenton, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Frisbee?
So to, so to the public, to be clear, we want residents of the city of Trenton to purchase property, and we're not saying that they cannot, we just are saying that there is another level, just so they are safe and knowing no one can say that there was any favoritism or anything that was done was not done on the level, so that's what this discussion is about, it is not to discourage anyone, it is to actually encourage, we want our residents, but we've been advocating since we've had our seats, that we want more residents of the city of Trenton to become homeowners, so let's be very clear on that, we just are doing our due diligence to make sure that everybody is crossing their Ts and dotting their Is so that everyone can go and enjoy their quality of life once they get in, acquire these properties. Thank you, Madam President.
And just, hopefully, hopefully to close the loop, I went on to the checklist that we have for selling employees, number one, you have to review the state and local ordinances with respect to conflicts and ethicals and make sure that the proper representation made, you have to avoid conflicts of interest, obtain an appraisal, you have to provide public notice, obviously, get approval from the governing body, and then the document, the, the transaction has to be documented thoroughly to identify, you know, who, what, when, where, and why, and it's basically one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight box checklist that's added to the due diligence if it's an internal city employee.
Thank you, Director.
Just, and the statute for that is NJSA forty-eight twelve dash thirteen.
Are you done? That's what I'm saying, are you done? I think he's still reading, that's why.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Okay, are you done? So are we okay with voting on this down, still, yes, right, thank you, all right, so I guess we can move to the vote.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Sorry, just real quick, one more time, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Madam?
No, so just to, just to be clear, I get where you're coming from, but my point was not through you, but through the process of what is law looking at, what everybody, are we looking at what we're supposed to be looking at, like, we should have known all of this beforehand is what I'm saying, right, so that everybody can come forward and we can move smoothly through this, while I'm glad we spent the time to clear this up.
There with you.
Right, but, yeah, we all gotta be on point in this thing.
Absolutely.
So, all right, thank you, thank you for that, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, everyone.
So, okay. So are we, I'm sorry, I have a motion to second for, for twenty-five dash fifty-three.
Yes.
Are we voting to, for that approval?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, Vice President Edwards? Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
With all the Ts crossed and Is dotted, yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, sir.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And so to be clear, then we do not need a resolution to, excuse me, a motion to rescind?
No.
Thank you, moving on to ordinance twenty-five dash fifty-four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as two seventy-one Tyler Street and identified on the city tax map as block one thirteen eight oh five, lot five, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to Luis Pesantes and Rene Reyes for the sale price of thirteen thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash fifty-five, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as sixty-one Anderson Street and identified on the city tax map as block one four seven oh five, lot forty-four, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to J Y U for the sale price of one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-five?
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Of ordinance twenty-five dash fifty-six, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as six thirty Edgewood Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block twenty-seven oh two, lot sixteen pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve dash thirteen C to Ebony Day for the sale price of three thousand dollars.
Um, ma'am, we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh fifty-seven, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-six Bryn Mawr Avenue and identified on the city tax map as block sixty-two oh two, lot forty-four, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to Lazar, Lazaro Dubon for the sale price of twenty-five thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero fifty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, I believe that brings us, brings us to public comment.
Yes, Mr. Garcia, read the list.
I'm sorry? Yes. And Madam President, we have nine individuals listed for public comment this evening to the public, public comment will be five minutes in duration for each individual, you may address any item that you wish, the council is not obligated to respond, first individual listed is Michael Smith. Oh, please state your name and address for the record when you approach. Michael Smith? Moving on to Caroline Clark.
There you go. Okay, I shouldn't have pushed it, good evening, council, good evening, Trentonians.
Address, please.
Eighteen twelve Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I attended the DEP presentation last Thursday, and I walked away with two things that I believe were important, Trenton Water Works is safe and Trenton Water Works is making progress. So in the context of those two things, why is the state forcing the sale of Trenton Water Works at this time? So the proposed co-owners will have the power to sell, if they own, they can sell, so the state's push for quote-unquote regionalization is really a push for privatization, and I am still curious why the state is investing in privatizing a public utility, so I turned to the two thousand and nine referendum, the Supreme Court case, and in that case, it said the state of New Jersey will receive additional gross receipts and franchise taxes from New Jersey American Water Works if that acquisition were to be completed. So in other words, if they privatize us, they make revenues, if they don't, if we don't become privatized, they don't, so they have a financial interest in privatizing Trenton Water Works, we have management problems, we agree, but we've been under state oversight, at least under two state departments for over ten years, one of them, and we haven't turned the corner, so what good is this state oversight? So we've had a police department, they knew that we had problems because we paid out seven million dollars, they said nothing, but here they are, all over the water. So they knew about illegally splintered contracts, they didn't call law enforcement, they called counsel to sanction the illegal activity. DEP also said, we hire improper, we, we hire improper people and we underinvest. Well, DCA knows when we're hiring, and some of those hires are from DCA, they're mandated hires. And with respect to underinvestment, Trenton Water Works made seven hundred and sixty million dollars over a ten-year period, where is the money? DEP should go ask DCA, where was the oversight over the last ten years when we made the money? What happened to the money and why wasn't the money reinvested in Trenton? DCA should have some of those answers rather than criticizing us. My final point is that the state is largely responsible for Trenton's fiscal plight or inability to proper invest, to properly invest is because we do not get the revenues from the state we should be getting, including that sixty-nine million dollars in taxes that we don't get, the use of our water, the use of our, our resources, our firemen, our roads, all those things, we are subsidizing the state, and then the state criticizes us for not reinvesting. You can't create the problem and then criticize us for not fixing the problem you helped to create. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can Dia, can Dia Torres? Victoria Rosari?
Victoria Rosari, nineteen Marlin Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, it's an honor again, be in front of you. The, dealing with the lady that was here, I had a re-group on what I was gonna say about moms with guns control and so forth, and according to Dr. Thomas Sowell, S O W E L L, he says that black and black crime in, in America, most of the shootings that was, that's happening in America right now is young black men against, or black and black, black men against black men. So the mid-war good and evil started where, you know, what we say, heaven, and which is the holy land, like Jerusalem and Mecca, between two ancient tribes, which is the tribe of Shabazz of fifty thousand years ago, and that called the tribe of Yakub was of six thousand four hundred years ago, both of them are still fighting here on earth, from Trenton to around the planet Earth. That's the war of good and evil and so-called, when you take it down to the minimum, black and black crime, and that's because many teachers have come from the east to North America to uplift what was considered then the free labors of slavery, which is African-American descendants of the first original slaves of fifteen fifty-five up to sixteen nineteen who are not properly documented anywhere except in the Nation of Islam. The only documentation of slaves here in America are from sixteen nineteen to sixteen, I think it's sixty-five, eighteen sixty-five, that is, sixteen nineteen, eighteen, sixteen sixty-five, with eighteen sixty-five, anyway, in the slavery, eighteen sixty-five, and they're British slaves. Those applied to, those slaves applied to the British slaves of sixteen nineteen, that goes back to fifteen fifty-five, were American slaves or sold to Americans, farmers or slave masters in North America. What I'm making is that this war's been going on since, you know, since the knowledge of God is made known to mankind and in the Bible and the Holy Quran, so that war of good and evil, God and the devil, Shabazz and Yakub, was the same fight here in Trenton, New Jersey, between the Muslims and the so-called guerrilla organization, or like in jail, for instance, you have, you have Muslims, you have Sunnis, you got Shiites, Nation of Islam, five percenters, then you have the gangster, gangster guerrilla, gangster families, or mafias, you know, so-called, and that was a part of, something like that. So therefore, I think that our reasoning about how to handle crime in America is falsely portrayed because of the descendants of the original slaves fifteen fifty-five, sixteen nineteen, who are not properly documented except for the Nation of Islam, that group of people are being used as a cash cow to, for the slave masters and then the people, or the black people of the tribe of Yakub, to exploit them and never find, and never, they have found solutions, but they never. and never, they have found solutions, but they never put forward, or gone forward the solutions to crime problems and economic problems and racial problems in America. Racial, the racial problem again is because of the tribe of Shabazz, I mean, the tribe of Yakov, which is Shaitan or Yeblis, the devil in the Bible, they were used to enslave the righteous people of the planet Earth, which is the tribe of Shabazz. And that continues, you'll never find a true solution, you will never receive a true solution through politics or religion as it is presented to us as is today. So I think that from now, every time you look at the policy, you look on TV anywhere, you always start with, "We need to work together, we need to work things out," but you never get to the true problem, which is between law enforcement, it's the same thing. Michael represents law enforcement under Jesus, and Jesus said we were gods. He questioned the Pharisees, "How are we gods?" So therefore, we can do godly things and therefore, it goes to law enforcement being under Michael. And that's not properly portrayed because now, if you look in the Bible, I think it's two ten, somewhere in the Bible says it's the devils do arrest you and put you in jail or something to that effect for ten years or ten days of tribulation. So therefore, that's taken over by the devils too. So I say, when we talk about the highest level of crime, criminal, criminal, of crime, we talking about devils and a person. If we're gods, then it has to be a good god and a bad god, and that's the way we need to address things and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Victor.
Bernice Vaughn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the council members and good evening to everyone. My name is Bernice Vaughn. I live on Columbia Avenue in Trenton, New Jersey. This evening, I just quickly would like to know a little or a lot about what is going on with the animal shelter. I am concerned that the city is continuing to spend more and more money on the animal shelter than they are on us, our senior citizens in the city of Trenton. And I am a senior citizen. I've been here for over fifty years. From, moved here from Virginia with my husband when he was enrolled in the United States Air Force. So we raised our three children here. And one is here, two are gone. But animals we love, we bought, we had a dog with them, so I'm not against animals. Just want to know why or what you are planning to do that would benefit us, the senior citizens. Throw us some of the money our way instead of throwing it to the animal shelter. Will someone please help me out with that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm in a little trouble here. The last name, I think, is Nance? Is that correct? Move to Anthony Samuels.
Greetings, council members, law director. Anthony Samuels, representing one fifty-three Oakland Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Years ago, I had bought the property from individuals, what I didn't know, they forfeited on the, on the land. So I paid over thirty-five thousand for the property and I put a judgment on them, fixed up the property and had a lawyer. Lawyer wrote to the city, trying to see what the payout is, how could we move forward? Sent the city the judgment, but I was awarded for misluden, still don't got no response. Few days ago, guy came from out of Connecticut, said he bought the property. So I'm like, "I don't know, what's going on?" Two days ago, again, I got eviction notice. So I'm asking to the city and I'm telling the city council members, I had to plan for that property. My daughter runs an organization, her name is Briel Samuels. It's called, I have a, the public pass, each one, am I able to put the, uh?
Mr. Samuels, real quick, can you just repeat, can you, I don't know if you said it, the address of the location you're talking about?
It's one fifty, one fifty-three Oakland Street.
That was your address when you lived?
My address, I live at six hundred Artisan Street, Trenton, New Jersey.
So you, you're talking about one fifty-three Oak?
Yes. I've been there for over ten years and unfortunately, the lady, she took care of her husband, Mr. Jay, and he said they moved down to South Carolina. So due to everything was required, required for me to do, sent notice to them, put the judgment in, she never came to court. I won the judgment, got a lawyer, we filed it. I put a construction lien on it, everything's on it. Still, Ms. Luden never gave us nothing, let's find out because we're not allowed to get it, we're not allowed to get the information by the tax. I tried, I tried. And then my daughter wanted to get this to make it happen, do something for the city. And now I got somebody, "Come on, knock it on the door." He wants to take the property and he's asking me, "What, what do I want to do with it? Could I pay him?" But I think that's unfair to me because I wanted to pay the tax and I paid for the building. So, I mean, I just need help in this situation. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Mr. Samuels, Director Bridges is going to give you his card so he can talk directly to you.
Yeah, I talked to him already and I appreciate it again. And my lawyer called, called the sheriff this, today, they didn't even put the eviction day on there, but they said I got July first. But still, we got a vision for that property and I just need help. Yes. And it's, it's not fair that you got people coming from out of the city, trying to take, we trying to do good. And she has a track record, she does bookbag drives, she's, she's, she just got her, the other day, masters. She, she ran the YMCA. I mean, it's for her, I just need help.
Thank you. Could you leave your email and stuff too? I know you have it with Mr. Bridges, but can you also leave it with Wordhead right here at the bottom?
All right, well, and have all the copies of Ms. Luden. They, they said we tried to contact Ms. Luden. This, we never contacted whatever, have, have copies as well. My lawyer, saying the day, I give all copies of what we, what we got the judgment on, here's the judgment and everything. She never gave us no, no, no help. We tried to get the property and now she just assorted it to somebody else and that's not fair. But again, I appreciate you, thank you guys, and I'm just trying to do something better for the city, help the kids out, you know? And we have good vision. Everything's written down there and all that and we just don't want to just lose that property. And it's not fair for that situation because he's not gonna do nothing to it and we want to do something to it, you know? Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Mr. Frisbee, Councilwoman Frisbee's coming over to you also.
Robin Vaughn.
Hello, good evening, council. Good evening, city of Trenton, Trentonians. Thanks for having me, giving me the opportunity to speak. Had a very difficult weekend. I think that it's fair to say that there should be some investigation into Earl Construction and, you know, they pulled up in front of my house. My nephew's like, "Optimus Prime is here. If you know, you know. We're gonna have to fix that." So, you know, the bosses around town has friends with big trucks, big, big trucks, and they pull up in front of residents' houses. I hope my infrastructure of my home is not compromised with these trucks rolling up on my street. So on another topic, word on the street is that Mayor Gassior and the NJDEP Commissioner are ace boom coons, are besties, are friends. The mayor is being disingenuous regarding his role in the publication of the RFP. He's throwing his rock and hiding his hand. Yes, he is, as he always does. Word on the street is that he asked Sean LaTuret, Commissioner of NJDEP, to offer, to author the RFP, to hire a consultant firm, to perform a feasibility study, to regionalize the city's water department and sell it to a private entity. The mayor is in talks with the state, DEP, DCA, the governor's office, and telling them that he has your support, that he has the city council on lock, that you all are supporting this effort. I would love to know who's gonna raise that ordinance. This is where the rubber meets the road, either you're with us or against us. Transparency is critical. Residents and taxpayers, the owners of our Water Works and all our departments, need to know where our council stands. We want to know who will raise that legislation that will move to regionalize, create an outside board, privatize or sell our water department. Who's gonna raise that ordinance? Who's gonna raise that legislation and who's gonna vote for it? Four to three, who's gonna vote for it? Well, for the record, as you well know, the municipal council, the legislative body, the most powerful entity in our government, the mayor plans, you approve the funds that cover his plan and you can overturn the mayor's veto. Yep, you sure can, by majority, supermajority vote. And guess who can overturn you guys? The petitioners by referendum per NJ forty colon sixty-nine A one eighty-five, by petition and referendum, can overturn any piece of legislation the city municipal council puts forward. So let's go! Tell us where you stand. Time is ticking. My understanding is the mayor is around town talking nonsense, as usual, talking about how he has to get this done by November before our state government turns perhaps to another party. So, but we in Trenton, we're ready. Trentonians, we're ready. We have the signatures. So either you're for us or against us. Keep playing in our faces. All right? And I'll land my plane and thank you very much. We'll see you around town.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
You're welcome.
And Madam President, those are all the individuals I have for public comment at this time. If it's your wish, you may start with any individual for civic comment.
Yes, thank you. We're gonna go left to right, Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll try to be as brief as possible. So first of all, tomorrow night, we have a really good and interesting North Ward Municipal Advisory Council meeting at Galley Baptist Church, four forty, Martin Luther King Boulevard, from five thirty to seven. We're going to have as our special guest, the Director of the Trenton Free Public Library, Director Karen O'Malley, will, will be with us to discuss what the library's been offering and what it will be offering in the future, some changes that have occurred that are really positive, but also safety at the library. So there are some misnomers that the library aren't, isn't a safe place, but it is something we'd like to discuss and make sure that folks get more comfortable about visiting the library and also to know more about what's being offered, particularly as it's on Academy Street in the North Ward. Additionally, I want to make sure folks know about an important event that will be this coming weekend at Locust Hill Cemetery. We, at seventy-three Hart Avenue, will be having a Memorial Day remembrance ceremony. It's sponsored by the Civil War veterans of Locust Hill Cemetery, as well as the Kiwanis International Club, Mike McCormick, who many people know, and our city of Trenton will be sponsoring it. It's at eleven AM. Please join us. The Sixth Regiment of the U.S. Colored Troop Reenactors will be with us as always. It's a very moving event and it's a way to honor the ten African-American Civil War veterans that we do know are there, there's potentially more. And this weekend is a weekend to honor those veterans who served our country, many of whom have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom and that, so we are able to even gather at a government function such as saying, which is simply just having a city council meeting. So I'll just close with, I know last week we had the meeting with DEP and Trenton Water Works. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, so I was struck in an auto accident, not my fault, and so was not able to make the meeting that night. But I did want to just say a few things. There's a lot of rumor, there's a lot of conjecture of what's going on. If anybody seriously has followed this council in the last two years, they know where this council stands regarding with the Trenton Water Works and any potential sale of it. And rest assured, and I say this also as someone who was a petition gatherer in two thousand and nine to defeat the sale of the Trenton Water Works, which, when members of the team did the research and they went deep, there's also foreign entities involved at New Jersey American Water that folks need to be aware about and that's not something we should ever consider ever again. But have no worry, this council is not going to be entertaining. Seriously, the idea of selling our Water Works certainly is a willy-nilly idea. This council does not respond to pressure, to influence. And I have not discussed this recently with the mayor personally, but if there's any evidence that the mayor is, you know, doing anything untoward regarding our Water Works, let that evidence be brought forth. Again, we had a discussion a little earlier about reputation and people being falsely charged with things. So we need to make sure before tomatoes, cans, anything gets thrown around, that people have the facts. And I will say this. The government in the city, the leaders of the city, if you ask them a question, you'll get an answer. And people, all they have to do is go on YouTube and they can see videos of this council and what they've said in civic comment regarding our Trenton Water Works and the many questions that have been asked about how to make it better and why it hasn't been allowed to do things such as issue additional bonding for all the repairs that need to be done. So we're asking and we're getting things done and we need to continue. And I, again, will congratulate and thank the administration for getting additional money from Hamilton Township. We need the rest of it. We also need the other towns to pay what they owe. Things are going to happen, things are going to be said, but if you have a question, please bring it to the dais here at city council and ask it, we'll answer it. Thank you, God bless, and have a great rest of your month and please have a safe Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Madam President. So good evening, everyone. I wanted to address a couple of items. One, Ms. Carolyn Clark, I wanted to just tell you a little thank you. Thank you for being an active person in our community and making sure that you keep us to the point, but also the rest of the state as well. I sincerely appreciate everything that you said on this evening. So thank you and I ask you to continue to come out and share with us and continue to hold, if we can get an opportunity to hold the state to the fire as well. So thank you for coming out here. Mr. Victor, I thank you for always being out here on this evening. You come out constantly and we appreciate you being out here. Ms. Bernice Vaughn, I want to just acknowledge what you said about the animal shelter and in comparison to our seniors. There is absolutely, positively no comparison. I love my pet, there is no, my pet does not vote for- There is no, my pet does not vote for me, and my pet, if it's between my pet and a senior, there is, there's never going to be a hesitation. So yes, as much energy as we put into the animals and making sure that they're secure, we also need to put the same type of energy into our seniors as well to make sure that they're secure and they have everything that they do. You are the reasons why, you are amongst those that are the reason why that we actually are sitting in these seats. You actually get to vote for us. The animals do not, and that is no disrespect to anyone. Love my animal, love every pet, but I'm never going to put funds into a place where it should be, where it's precedence over our seniors. So thank you so much for being out here this evening and bringing that to our attention. To Mr. Anthony Saunders, I believe he, who left, situation that he's in with his family ought not be. If he, I can't wait to go through the paperwork to see what he has presented and get some questions and answers done. But if someone's been investing there, they should not be getting an eviction notice about property they've been investing in. I want to thank our, my colleagues for giving a unanimous on the second reading of ordinance twenty-five, there's zero four six, advocating for gun safety in our community and in other counties as well is something that's high on my priority list, and I appreciate your support on this. I want to say thank you to our directors, in particular to Inter Director Paul Harris, who's been working so very diligently on Catwalter Park. It is looking more and more beautiful each and time, each and every time that I go out there. Right now, we're finally getting started on the outer loop, which is just being repaved, which is incredible, considering that we have an event coming up on June seventh, which is our party in Orange, which I invite each and every one of you to come out. That is going to be a time at ten AM on June seventh, where we will be bringing attention to the gun violence in our city, but also we will be giving support to those families that have been impacted by gun violence. So we ask you to come out, be a support, be a part of the solution. You know, it is, it takes all of us to make a difference in our community. Our water, as I will echo with my colleagues, said, we are by no ways giving up our water system easily. There's, they will be, we will be fighting tooth and nail. I said it from the very first moment that they brought it to our attention, and I'll continue to say it, our water is not for sale. I want to just say thank you to our directors, our administration, to all of you that are here tonight for coming out, whether you came to the dais to speak or not. I thank you for your time and being out here as well. And on that, I will close with a portion of our mission statement that says, recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust, we are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank you all for being out, and everyone get home safely, and thank you again for being here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. So first, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg asked me to announce, because her phone was acting up, so she's not.
Okay.
Yeah, she's not going to say anything. She's having her CPAC meeting on Thursday, May the twenty-second, from five thirty to seven PM. She has special guest Jackie Cornell of MP, well, MP, I guess she's an MPAP, opioid settlement funding, Deputy Director of Mercer County Department of Human Services. She has featured guest director, Police Director Steve Wilson and Public Works Director Wally Anatiri. That's happening at St. Mary's Church on three thirty-five Adeline Street in Trenton. Also, her meetings happen the fourth Thursday of each month. With regards to Trenton Waterworks, on behalf of Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, she says Trenton Waterworks is not for sale. She's not with it. She's not with regionalization. She's not forgiving up our waterworks. From me, Crystal Feliciano, Councilwoman at Large, I've said it from the rip, I'm not with the regionalization, I'm not with giving up Trenton Waterworks. I still believe that there is more that can be done for us to hold on to this and work it out. We just need to figure it out, and we need to work it out. The state needs to come up off the money to help us with this. DEP and DCA need to get on the same page and stop playing around. I feel like, like I've said, our hands are tied, right? They're both coming at us, but not meeting each other in the middle. Again, I still would love to have a conversation with DCA, with DEP, with the council, and with the mayor, right, and his administration, just so we can hear all sides at the table at the same time. I think that that is critical for us moving forward with this. We hear a lot of things, and then to Councilwoman Williams' point about what was being said that the mayor is supposedly saying, you know, show and prove that. Like, we want, you know, if he's saying it, we want to hear him say it. Conversations that I've had with him, he has not said that. He spoke publicly at the, he spoke publicly at the DEP meeting. He said what he said, you know, and so far, as much as that goes, I have to take him at what he said until I see differently. I'm not seeing or hearing anything different from him, and I'm not one to really go with what they say, because they say a lot of things about me that ain't so. So if y'all got something you want to say or prove, then have somebody come here and bring it so we could see it or hear it for ourselves. To that end, I thank everybody for coming out tonight. I thank everybody for speaking up from their perspective about different concerns and everything that they have. Our senior citizens are very important, and by no means would anybody take anything for any other department, right, to take away from our senior citizens. Y'all are the foundation from which we come, right? And I hope that we live long enough to be fruitful senior citizens. We get older, and people will look out for us. So don't think that we just ignore anything that's being said or just go along with anything. I do know that Dr. Diego Minicappelli, our Director of Health and Human Services, is working very hard to address every issue, to work things out for the seniors. I know that some seniors were complaining about the Reading Center and getting things fixed over there. They are working on that to get that done. Things take time, but it is in the plans and is the work to get things done. I know that he's trying to address different issues, the lead issue, he's trying to address the animal shelter issue, he's trying to address y'all, and, you know, still run his unit to the very best of his ability. But I have every confidence in him that he will pull through and do what it is that needs to be done and work with his staff to make sure that quality of life for everybody is met to the very best of his ability and to the very best of the resources that are provided to make that happen. That being said, I thank everybody for coming out. Thank you to all the directors for everything that you do. Shout out to Public Works for getting out there in front of Architect Housing. Thank you for taking care of the brickwork that needed to be done, because that was truly a hazard and tearing up people's stuff. So thank you for looking out, because that is the entrance way and X away for our senior citizens. So I appreciate y'all jumping on top of that and getting it done. And directors, for all the work that you all do for all of us, for the mayor, right, and then for the constituents in the city, we appreciate you. Everybody have a wonderful night. Have a safe and blessed holiday weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano. Council Vice President Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I want to touch on a few things, but for the sake of time, I'm just going to keep my comments short and just say I do support city employees purchasing city-owned properties. And let's just be fair across the board, I know that there are guidelines regarding the appraisals and things, but I think that it's a good incentive, and it should be an actual program for the city to have a housing incentivization program for city employees to purchase city-owned properties, and that would definitely drastically push things forward in that regard to getting our city-owned properties back on the tax roll and making sure our employees live here and are invested in our city. Today was the last day to register to vote for the upcoming election. I just want to say a gentle reminder to please cast your vote, regardless of who you're voting for, voting is important and affects a lot of things. It affects our funding, it affects our community in every way that you may not be able to imagine. So please exercise your rights. I want to say to the gentleman, Michael Smith, who had unfortunately had to leave before his name came up on a public comment, he was here to speak about exercise equipment specifically in Unity Square Park that was removed. Him and a lot of other ladies and gentlemen who often went to that park to exercise are very upset that the equipment was moved and have not been given any type of reassurance to its return in the unforeseeable future. And he also had comments to, you know, when, when speaking to, I guess whoever in the administration was saying, well, Catwater Park does have exercise equipment, we have to keep in mind that though we would love for our city to be united as a whole, as Trentonians, we are very segregated and siloed, and some people do not feel comfortable with going into other areas of the city that they are not particularly from. So let's keep that in mind and make sure that every side of the city has access to exercise equipment, as gym memberships can be very costly, and we want to make sure we put health as a priority in our city. Lastly, Trenton Waterworks, the elephant in the room. Unfortunately, to my knowledge, the DEP Commissioner nor anyone from DEP had addressed this council prior to putting out an RFP, and from what I understand, that this entire council found out when the public found out. Unfortunately, sometimes that's the way things have been going, and I'm hoping that we can improve some type of communication. I would personally love if the Commissioner themselves could come in here and address council. We, Council President and I had met with our attorney today, Mr. Koloji, to talk about what our roles and responsibilities are as a legislative and governing body of this city, and particularly Trenton Waterworks, as it is a department of this city. It is under our oversight. So we do have jurisdiction and unfortunately have not been at the table during any of these discussions. So it was to my surprise as well that an RFP was put out, but doing my due diligence, they are well within their rights to do so. So they did not violate any laws. And I want to say that they do have a broad authority to regulate water systems, especially where the public health concerns under the unsafe drinking water violations to the Safe Drinking Water Act. There's a mandate to corrective actions or operational changes for noncompliant water utilities. There's a, there's a, they can facilitate or recommend regionalization or consolidation of water systems when it deems such action necessary to protect public health or ensure reliable services. But at the end of the day, this is the governing body, and they cannot do anything regardless of whatever RFP they have the authority to release, to make any decisions about Trenton Waterworks regionalization, going into an authority, the change of its governance, or anything like that without this city council. I am not for the sale of Trenton Waterworks, even though I do professionally understand that creating an authority does not mean to sell, but in essence, it is in some ways when you talk about regionalization, having to split the revenue between other municipalities. Though, I do want to say, an authority similar to housing authority and parking authority where it's a Trenton entity, I am in favor of, because it would be able to have its own bonding power. Being able to free up bonding power and increase our capacity under our general operating budget would be a plus for the city. Regionalization authority, I'm still out on that, but an authority would be helpful. And I wish I had more time to explain, but we can continue this. Have a good night.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Good evening, everyone. Really quickly, I just want to thank Ms. Carolyn, Victor, Ms. Bernice, Mr. Anthony, and Ms. Robin for being here and expressing your concerns, sharing your ideas, and letting us know what is going on. I do know there was some that were going to be addressed. I know Ms. Councilwoman Frisbee spoke with Ms. Samuels, and Ms. Vaughn, we heard you loud and clear. We definitely want to make sure that our seniors are taken care of, so thank you for sharing that with us. And Ms. Carolyn, thank you, and Ms. Robin, for, thank you for bringing those laws and different information for us to be educated on as well. Just a quick announce, not quick announce, I also want to thank my colleagues for supporting the Emergency Preparedness Plan and also the Parking Ordinance. As most people know, we, when we try to create these ordinances, we're really trying to think about the people first. So most of the things that we're putting forth is for the people of the city of Trenton to make sure that it benefits the residents here in the city. Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee, for also putting forth the firearms ordinance also. We want to keep our city safe, and we are doing our best to do that as much as possible. As far as the water department, I mean, we have said this several times, several meetings, I can't say it enough, I am not in favor of regionalization, I am not in favor of selling the Trenton Water Department. The only way I would even consider something like that is if the people came here and said that that's what they wanted, and we put it at for a referendum. Other than that, I'm not for it. So no one has to doubt where most of us on this council stand, and me, Yasminelli Gonzalez, is not in favor of it. Also, thank you, Director Bridges, for clarifying some of the city-owned properties and the selling of it to employees. We definitely want to encourage our employees to purchase property, so thank you for clarifying that. I don't think any one of us wants to say no to that effort. And just a quick thing too, I know we mentioned this before, but when you don't hear us asking a bunch of questions, Councilwoman, Council Vice President and myself, we do meet with the administrators prior to the council meeting. We ask these questions beforehand, and then we share it with the other council members for, thanks to our presidents who were before us for actually putting that in place. So just when you hear some of us not asking as many questions, it's because a lot of these questions were answered, were asked and answered, and a long discussion was had prior to even coming on council. I think that was all. I just want to do a quick shout-outs, voices of the people, thank you for organizing their event that they had Saturday. There were several things going on throughout the city, so I just want to shout out everyone who was doing something positive, educating our people, educating the youth on just being positive and being a positive light here in the city of Trenton. We have a lot going on, and I do know that it's also Mental Health Awareness Month, so if you know of anyone that needs any help, it's okay to ask for help. We have resources, we have programs available. Please do not hesitate to ask for help, whether it's from a neighbor, whether it's from calling a city, calling, Googling the programs, the resources that are available, but there are things in place, so please consider that. Also, this Friday, they have the renaming of the Carlos Negron Park, which would be on Passaic Street. And Carlos Negron was a state trooper, he was from Trenton, he was the first state trooper in the state of New Jersey to be shot and killed in a line of duty. When he was pulling over someone, they opened fired on him the minute he pulled them over. Also want to say that next Rent Stabilization Board meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at six PM here at City Hall. So if anyone has any issues with their rent, their landlords, please bring that to that meeting on Tuesday, May seventy, twenty-seventh. And then I also want to shout out the city for launching a city stat program, which it looks like it was well-attended. I know it was at ten AM, the next one will be at five thirty PM in June, so they're going to alternate the times. I know people had concerns about that, but there's going to be one in the morning and then also one in the evening. So thank you for putting that forth. I know a lot of people were happy and were able to get their voices heard, so thank you for putting that forth. And just happy Memorial Day, have a safe and happy holiday. Thank you all for being present this evening.
Madam President, at this time, I believe we've reached a point if you ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, so yes, we could have a motion to, we're not going to, I don't think we have a vote, though, right?
I don't believe we anticipate a vote coming out of executive session, do we?
No. So we can, a motion to go, yes.
Oh, and I apologize, and the purpose for executive session this evening is for personnel purposes, and is discussion of council aides, correct? Thank you.
So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Royal Carl, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
She's off.
Oh, that's right. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion carried.